And the pledges. And Pastor Hunter Simmons with Grace Point Church is going to be leading us in the invocation. Please, thank you.
Y'all, please pray with me. Unless the Lord builds the house, those who build it labor in vain. Unless the Lord watches over this city, the watchman stays awake in vain. It is in vain that you rise up early and go late to rest, eating the bread of anxious toil, for he gives to his beloved sleep. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the best builder, the best watchman, and you have placed people over the city of Corpus Christi to do just that. And I pray that you instill perseverance in them, instill wisdom, instill insight over these officials that sit in these seats. But, Lord, more so than that, they are more than just officials that fill a seat. I pray for their families, their friends, their loved ones. They go home to these people, and so I pray that you bless them there. And I pray for those that stand behind me, pray for their loved ones, for their families, Lord, that your goodness and your love and your grace would fill them as we are a people that make up this state and this city, Lord, this city that is named the body of Christ. And pray just that, too, that the blood of your Son would cleanse this city and the streets. The forgiveness and the love that you poured out through your Son Jesus and his death and resurrection would be what ignites and unites this place. And we thank you for that and thank you for what he has done. And so I pray for this meeting, and I pray that you are in it, and you bless the time here this morning, and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. It is 9:08. We have all commissioners present. We have a quorum. We are at 9:01 Leopard Street and then Oasis County Courthouse Commissioners Court, and I call this meeting to order. First off, do we have any commissioners who wish to disclose any conflicts of interest? If you don't now, you can do so when an item comes up if you fail to recognize that. We will go straight into our public hearing at nine o'clock. The Commissioner, Oasis County Commissioners Court, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 13, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. This is input and participation of residents of the Colonia Self-Help Center Program. And Anna, you want to lead us off in that? Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The purpose of this is to give an update on an award that we received from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs on the Colonia Self-Help Center Program. We have received this award in the amount of $500,000, and the purpose of this is to provide three components in the Colonias. We have selected five Colonias. And this program is Cindy Park, The Ranch, Blue Bonnet, Jaylen, and Rancho Banquete. Any of the Colonias can participate, but these are the ones that we have to keep records of. The program will consist of tool lending, a library, that we can provide tools that they can use for their homes and then bring them back. That way, they don't do the expense. We have technology assistance where they can have Internet at a location, they can look up, do research, probably, you know, find out things that, how to fix their home or tools, user tools. And then we have reconstruction. So we have four years of this program that we can make available. We will be putting out a bid, sending out bids for third party to help us manage the program and part of their components, like reconstructions and managing. So now it's the public. Any questions that we may have?
Very good.
Do we have anyone from the public that has any questions or wishes to speak about this issue alone? Thank you, Anna. That was very informative. And then I will go ahead and close the public hearing. We are done. Do we have to? We don't have a vote. We've already been awarded it. Do we need to vote on that?
Do we have to have a motion to close?
Just to close.
A motion to close?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The public hearing is closed, going back to our regular hearing. It is 9:11 now, and we will start off with certificates of recognition and recognition of Graciela Conklin's 33 years of service with Oasis County. We are very pleased to recognize our staff who have been with us and dedicated their lives to service in Oasis County. Is anyone here that wishes to speak or, yes, you want to say something? We have a certificate and we have a watch as well to present, so.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Glad to be here on behalf of Gracie Conklin. She has served 33 years proudly. Probation officer job is very hard at times, and she has done that for 33 years, done a wonderful job in most of it. She's served the community over in Robstown, over at Hilltop, and I am proud to have served half of that with her.
You shouldn't want to say anything. Would you come up? We have something to present to you anyway.
Thank you for your service, ma'am.
Yeah, we're going to bring you all the way up. There's only us, so y'all can say whatever you want to do. Whichever's easiest.
Little hybrid.
Plenty of room down here, so this is for you. And then naturally, we have this.
Right there's a good one.
Are we good? I just take one step. Oh, I've never told you. Sorry. Okay, you all ready? One, two, three. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And next, we have a presentation in recognition of the Coastal Bend State Veterans Cemetery Staff. And Mr. Kelly, Dr. Kelly is here from Austin to present this award, and we're so thankful and happy with everything that y'all have done out there. We're very proud of our cemetery out there and the work that gets done. Yes.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, county staff, and citizens of Oasis County. I bring you greetings from Austin. My name is Dr. John Kelly. I am the Director of the Texas State Veteran Cemetery Program, which includes a total of four cemeteries right now, down in the Rio Grande Valley, at Mission, of course, here in the Coastal Bend, in Corpus Christi, our cemetery in Colleen, in the central Texas region, and then our Texas State Veteran Cemetery, Abilene. And I'll mention, we're very excited. We're actually building a fifth cemetery right now up in Lubbock, and that's progressing well. What I came here today is to inform you, every year, the VA sends out surveys to the next of kin and the funeral directors for services that are conducted on our grounds in the cemetery program. It's a simple survey, about 20 questions, and it uses a Likert scale that you're probably familiar with. You didn't know it was called that, but it's a Likert scale, and you answer strongly agree, agree, neither agree or disagree, disagree, and strongly disagree. So you've taken surveys like that before. Arguably, the very first question they ask is the most important one, and the question is, are you satisfied with the service you received at the cemetery? Because that is collecting a true customer satisfaction score. And so the VA only counts the strongly agree and the agree responses, and they compile it all together, and they provide us with a customer satisfaction score. In 2021, we had a very, very impressive 97.48% customer satisfaction. Last year, for fiscal year '22, it went up to 98.12% customer satisfaction. We received our fiscal year '23 results just a few weeks ago. To all who shall see these presents, greetings. Know ye that Oasis County is recognized for their dedication and unparalleled service to our cherished veterans and their families. The Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery directly contributed to the achievement of an extraordinary 99.03% customer satisfaction for the Texas State Veteran Cemetery Program. That's signed Dawn Buckingham, Chairwoman of the VLB. Judge, I'd like to present this to you, and I would like to ask the cemetery staff to come up if they would.
And y'all guys want to come, and we'll do a photo?
Please. As they move up, I just want to say, I don't sit in Austin and achieve that. Commissioners, Judge, y'all don't achieve that sitting here in the courtroom. It is the staff at the cemetery that achieve that. They are the people. They are the people taking care of those beautiful grounds that you see when you visit, headstones. They're interfacing directly with the families and the funeral directors. And so this is really to thank the county for these wonderful county staff members. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, one step this way. There, good. Go. Walk quick. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Judge.
Few more. Few more.
Yeah. Be nice.
We're moving on to our resolutions. Our first item up in G1, adopt a resolution in recognition of Dale Nelson's retirement and service to the Coastal Bend. I'm so happy to see you and so thankful. I think Emily's going to read the resolution first, and then we'll have a motion.
Whereas, after 42 years of service at Chris 6 News, Dale Nelson has been a steadfast, committed, and reliable voice in our community, helping people in South Texas keep families safe and informed during weather events. Whereas, during that time, he has covered hurricanes and other historic weather events like the freeze of 2021 and the Christmas Eve snow of 2004. Mr. Nelson has obtained many accolades such as the Associated Press's Best Weather Cast and Corpus Christi Caller Times Best of the Best Award multiple times. Whereas, over four decades in the Coastal Bend, Dale Nelson has volunteered to speak at countless civil organizations and schools and helped raise money for the Alzheimer's Association and the Women's Shelter. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court in Oasis County, does hereby formally recognize Dale Nelson's 42 years of service at Chris 6 News and congratulates him on his great success and wishes him the very best on his retirement. Duly adopted by vote of the Commissioners Court of Oasis County, Texas, on this 13th day of December, 2023.
Make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And I think a couple of the Commissioners want to speak for a second, too.
Absolutely. What a great day. You know, I don't even know how long I've known Dale Nelson. This is kind of a cool day for me because there's two resolutions for two men today that I've known a long, long time. And Dale was always such a great guide to me when I was a young man, and I appreciate, you know, all his professionalism, and it's amazing to see, and it just means, unfortunately, we're getting old as some of these great TV personalities continue to leave our community, not leave our community, but leave the airwaves at least. So Dale, I just want to say, you've done a great job. We appreciate everything you've done for this community, not just on the air, but your public service, your community service, and you've led the way for many, many years. So quite frankly, and I don't mean this rudely, I don't even know who else does weather in Corpus Christi besides Dale Nelson. And I don't want to hear my Channel 3 and 10 friends call me, but it is what it is. It is what it is, right? So Dale, thank you very much, and we really appreciate it. Congratulations on your retirement. We hope you'll stay around and be here for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Absolutely. Did you want to say something to Commissioner?
Yeah. Dale, can I call you Dale? Feel like family. And we are, right? We welcome you to our homes every night. You bring us comfort when times are worrisome for hurricanes, for severe storms. When I was watching you that Christmas Eve, and you didn't want to commit to snow, and then later on learned the true story of why you didn't want to build up that anticipation, I was an adult. I wasn't even a child. I had a one-year-old at the time, and that was special. But all these special events that you were able to bring, and in those troubling times that you've brought comfort, and people know they can tune into the TV and see that face, and you're kind of like the pilots and the staff of an airplane. As long as you have that normal face, we know we're going to be okay. If you lost it, then we might lose it. But this is just one of those things where, gosh, you know, it's comforting every evening to see you and just to hear the weather, great, bad, indifferent. I do blame you sometimes when it gets too hot. I'll never blame you when it gets too cold because it can never get cold enough here in Corpus Christi, but thank you for your service. You are going to truly be missed, and this is, I just think a great way to celebrate you, give you a chance to say goodbye to the community, hopefully not forever, but just off the airwaves. So congratulations. Thank you.
If we could get you to come down front, too. I think we have the resolution signed for you as well, and take a photo if you want your, welcome to bring your family.
If you want to say something, too, please. I'm sorry I jumped the gun and.
I mean, he is a TV guy. He's got to want to talk.
Well, I'm not sure if it's a good idea for the judge and the county commissioners to be giving me a mic. I could see my colleagues at Channel 6 saying, that's probably not a good idea. But I will say a couple of things that came to mind. I appreciate everything that Brent, that you said, and John, I think that's wonderful, and I really appreciate it. It means a lot to me. Right after I came here from Iowa, I said the word, I said, here in Corpus tonight, we're going to have unseasonably mild temperatures. And boy, the phones lit up. Said, son, this is not Corpus. This is Corpus Christi. And I heard that in the prayer this morning, and I've never forgotten that. And that was like on day one. And then on about day 17, the owner of the station came down and said, son, when it hits 50 degrees, it's not cool. It's cold in Corpus Christi. So I said, man, I better start taking notes. Because this is definitely different. It's a place I fell in love with and raised a family here, and it was, it's been a fantastic run for me. I remember sitting at the dinner table with my mom and dad. We were discussing the chores that my brother and I would do, and my dad said, get it done. My mom said, make sure you get it done right. So I've always tried to live by that. And so, any event, I love this area and not going to be moving right away, so I'll still be around, but I won't be on the air as Brent mentioned. But look forward to retirement. There's other things that I want to do, and I had knee replacement surgery back in September, and that was really an eye-opening event for me, that I really have some unfinished business on other things that I want to accomplish. And so that's what's led to my retirement. So I thank you for this, and let's get on with the pictures.
Well-deserved retirement as well, and those sentiments were felt by all.
Y'all, bring everybody. Come on. Everybody you brought, Dale. Everybody you brought, please. Anybody that wants to come in as well, come get in the photo. Congratulations. Good night, you.
One. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dale, congratulations. Appreciate you.
Congratulations, sir. Have a good retirement.
Thank you. We have to do it one more time anyways. Awesome job. Moving on to resolution number two in recognition of Coach McMinn's 700th win in his outstanding career.
Morning. Whereas, Coach McMinn began his career at Incarnate Word Academy in Corpus Christi. He was afforded the valuable experience of coaching boys and girls at IWA and led the Lady Angels to compete at the state competition for the Texas Association for Private and Parochial Schools. In 1993, he was hired at Flower Bluff High School as the head girls' basketball coach and is entering in his 31st year with the Lady Hornets. He has been the assistant athletic director for 16 years and has served as the athletic director for four years. Coach McMinn has a total of 37 years of experience and education. Whereas, Coach McMinn has led the Lady Hornet basketball program to eight regional appearances, five district championships, and one state appearance in the 2016-2017 season. He has had 42-19 playoff record and has won 700 in four games as a head coach. He has had the honor of coaching five Division I athletes and several Division II and III athletes as well. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Oasis County, does hereby formally recognize Coach James McMinn's 700 wins in his outstanding career. Duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners Court of Oasis County, Texas, on this 13th day of December, 2023.
So moved, Judge.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And Coach, would you like to come up and say a few words as well? I know Brent's going to talk about you, too, but.
Man, I've been talking about him for years.
I know. We all feel like we know you very well.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you for this recognition. It's a team effort. There are a lot of people that are assistant coaches, little dribbler coaches, parents, the obviously talented athletes that deserve to be here, being recognized more than I am. But thank you for all the recognition and everything that y'all do, and couldn't be here without everybody behind the scenes that deserves to be here. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Judge, thank you. James McMinn and I have known each other for over 40 years, again, which just means we're really getting old, and that gray hair is really coming out.
I think you're cheating a little bit.
Yeah, maybe. But we'll talk later. But seriously, 700 wins is, I don't even know how to, that's amazing. And certainly, it's not just because you've been around a long time. If we had put the win-loss record in there, it would have been pretty phenomenal to see as well because you have led a program, programs, so successfully for so many years, and you're such an icon at Flower Bluff, and it's just, it's awesome to be able to bring you up here because I would venture to guess, and I don't know the numbers, but I think 700 wins in basketball's got to be one of the most winningest coaches in Texas history, not just in Corpus Christi. So I don't know where you rank, and I know he won't tell me because he's too humble to do that. But I'm proud to have known you for all these years. I'm proud to be your friend. You have been an outstanding coach, a great husband, father, community leader, Flower Bluff leader, all the things that go along with it. So I just want to congratulate you on behalf of all the residents of Oasis County. I do happen to represent Flower Bluff, and I know how much they love you out there. My son's a student at Flower Bluff, my youngest son. So what you do is amazing. And let me tell you, Judge, too, if I may for a second, I have my charity run every year for the American Diabetes Association, and his team comes out and volunteers for that. And they are a true reflection of him. They are awesome. And I want you to go back, and I've told them that, and I hope you go back and share that, because they come out and they're so energetic, and they don't just stand around like a lot of sometimes young people do. They get after it. I don't even have to tell them. I mean, Peyton's been out there, and Emily's been out there, and we've all watched them, and they make our lives easy, and that's because of the kind of coach and mentor you are to them. So it says a lot of who you are. It's an honor to put you on here today and recognize you, and congratulations on all your great success. And I know they recognize you at Flower Bluff, and I'm sorry I wasn't there, I wasn't available to be there, but I wanted to bring you down here and do this. And, you know, I love you. Congratulations, and keep going.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words.
We have a resolution for you as well, if you want to come down and do a photo. Anyone you would like to join, please.
Ready? One, two, three.
Coach, congratulations.
Is he at Flower Bluff or Incarnate Word?
He started at Incarnate Word, and now he's been at Flower Bluff for years.
Just here, Incarnate Word here.
Yeah, that's where he started.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Let me just state, if you've signed up for public comment, we cannot respond. You have three minutes when you get to the microphone. Please state your name and address clearly. And Mike Scott, you're number one.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Mike Scott, more commonly known nowadays as Mr. Connie Scott. But I live at 5548 County Road 81 in Robstown. I'm here today to beg for y'all's vote for Martin Parrish. Martin is an old friend of mine. He's the most qualified candidate we've ever had here in Corpus Christi to serve on the port board. As a former port commissioner, I know what the needs are at the port, and we don't need lawyers and doctors and that kind of people on the port. We need people that know oil and gas, and Martin knows it probably better than the port. He's a phenomenal guy. He's a good guy. He's even-tempered. He's nice. He's, when he worked at his old job, if you had a problem, he always went to Martin. He's a great problem solver, and he just. He's a great problem solver, and he's just a great guy. Martin just finished two projects before he left where they're converting animal fat, grease, to diesel fuel. They spent a billion dollars on building these two units. And now all the animal fat, rather than going to a waste farm, goes in to make diesel fuel. Martin has that kind of experience. He knows more than I've ever known about refineries and ports and all that. So I'm asking for your vote. I know it's hard to do, and I feel sorry for y'all, but Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. John Herrick.
Good morning. My name is John Herrick, and I live at 8118 Nazareth Drive. I'm here representing the Emergency Medicine Residency Program and just wanted to provide an update and also just extend our heartfelt thanks to the Commissioners for seeing this through, even through this week when we had the meeting yesterday. This would not have been possible without Judge Scott appointing the special committee and the long hours, especially that Doctor, Commissioners Mahrez and Chesney spent on this. As an update, we've resumed interviewing. We've had three sessions since the resolution has passed. And Dr. Tominek and Leeson's are there today interviewing. The early feedback has been excellent. We've got many candidates that said they were just awaiting a resolution to this and that they'd be excited to come to Corpus Christi and train. So so far, so good. We've been working diligently to instill confidence into them that Corpus Christi is a great place. And it seems that they are, they believe in that to be true. So I also wanted to say a thank you to Johnny Hip and the Noasis County Health District Board for finding the solution and getting it done so quickly. This has been a great success story, both in the outcome and the speed in which it's happened. Thank you again to the court for all you've done. We look forward to serving the Noasis County patients for a long time to come.
Thank you. Lisa Turkott. I might have said it wrong.
No, you said it right, Judge.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Judge Scott and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Moncrief Turkott, and I reside in Port Aransas, Texas. I was born and raised in Kingsville, Texas, and lived in Sarita, Texas for 40-plus years. My grandmother bought our place in Port Aransas in 1957, so I have a long love for our island. Growing up in South Texas, it's easy to say that many of my family and friends have had long prosperous careers in the oil and gas industry. As a Texan, it would be ludicrous of me to say that I was against oil and gas industry. I realize the value it has for our state and our specific region. What my focus is today is to speak about the very important task all of you have, appointing two members to the port authority of Corpus Christi, replacing Commissioner Charlie Zahn and hopefully possibly Brian Gully. Most of us in this room are aware of the problems the port has had in recent past, poor communication and relations with the surrounding communities most affected by port activity, overspending by the port, and the failure to disclose such spending and transparency to the public. General goodwill toward the port has suffered during the tenure of Sean Strawbridge, the recently resigned CEO. And with the appointment of the new CEO, Kent Britton, I am hopeful that the direction of the port will be reversed to include the communities that it involves. My concern this morning is the seat of Brian Gully. And I'd just like to say, I became aware of Brian Gully when I moved to Port Aransas in 2015. The residents were concerned and surprised by the newly-developed barge docking company that Dr. Gully was involved with and owned, but since has no involvement with it, I understand. Dr. Gully caught my eye then because a whole deal seemed to come overnight and be done in a very clandestine way. How could the majority of the residents of Port Aransas, Texas not have heard about this very important development in their most prized fishing and swimming spot off their island home? I've been very involved with our quest to halt some of the development on Harbor Island. And what I've heard from Brian Gully is that he has officially supported the marine hostage lease that was settled between Port Aransas and the city of Port Aransas that prohibits the city from voicing any opinion about a desalinization plant, a VLCC terminal, or channel deepening to 80 feet in our, on our island and in the ship channel. Gully claims it's just a few naysayers, or what he calls environmental socialist, that are against this development. And that couldn't be any way further than the truth. Do I look like an environmental socialist? I'm just a retired educator from Texas A&amp;M Kingsville that loves the water, loves the fish, and understands that the estuary that is right off the Harbor Island is, it feeds the nursery school of our wildlife and our fisheries. Dr. Gully states on the radio and public, all of these things, that the permits for Harbor Island are there, granted, and they're not. There has only been one permit granted by TCEQ. And I think I'm out of time. I appreciate y'all's ears. I hope that you have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Kathy Fulton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Am I all right?
You can pull that down.
Oh, okay. Yes, good morning. My name is Kathy Fulton, and I live in Port Aransas, Texas. Number one, I want to echo everything that Lisa said about Dr. Gully, and I could add a whole lot more, but I'm going to focus on a few others. I'm being the bad guy here and focusing on a few of the other applicants. I have nothing against any of these people. I don't know them. But I've gone through all these applications and looked. And on the first other person besides Dr. Gully that I want to say is not necessarily qualified is Mr. Lamontia. And the reason is because there's really nothing in his application that jumps out as being like anything beneficial for the port. It's a pretty generic answer about why he wants to serve on the port, but he doesn't address any, doesn't make mention of any controversies that have gone on with the port or anything like that. He doesn't, he doesn't mention expenses, transparency problems. You know, we've already got three Commissioners on there right now that are all in finance. You know, two are bankers. We just, I just don't see that there's much benefit. It's just kind of, again, not criticizing the man, it's just lackluster. Moving on, I want to say that Mr. Paul Altide, or Altide, he is, he's Director of the Ed Rochelle Foundation, who owns property right across Highway 361 from the port's property there on Harbor Island. The Ed Rochelle Foundation, just recently, if they haven't acquired it, they've almost got it because it's passed all the other agency or entities, foreign trade zone status. And the problem with that is, you know, you've got a foreign trade, so he'll be in charge of one foreign trade zone and then be on the port commission with a separate foreign trade zone? That's a conflict, hands down. There is also the issue about Access Midstream that has an application with the Army Corps. And in that application, that is a small little piece of leased property they apparently still have on the Ed Rochelle property there at Harbor Island for a marine, a oil export terminal. So again, you can't, you know, competing with the port like that. And finally, on Mr. Pedradie, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to just get this out there real quick. He is, he's a good guy. I'm hearing he's a great guy. But he is President of Texas Energy, or however it's termed. And then he's CEO of SV Energy. And Mr. Houja is either President or CEO of those two same entities. They're business partners. And the problem with being a business partner, you know, you're going to put, have two people on the commission from the same business, and that's, I'm sorry, we've got to steer ourselves away from everything being, I get everybody, we all like oil. We all drive a car, or most of us do. But we need to remember that the port isn't just about that. The port exports less, there are all this stuff about their tonnage. It's less than, I'm almost at, less than 1% agricultural, less than 1%. That should, that should get people a little excited. The port was established on agriculture, and we don't ship cotton. So it's good to, it's good to think about this. Let's get away from just being all one thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke Daly.
Hi, neighbors. Neighbors today fall into three categories: those we know and trust.
State your name and address first, sorry.
Oh, Luke Daly, Port Aransas. Neighbors today fall into three categories: those we know and trust, those we don't really know, and those we can't really trust. Over the past few years, the Port of Corpus Christi has become a neighbor we just can't trust. The oil boom from fracking and pipeline construction has brought them record profits. Unfortunately, millions and millions of those untaxed profits have been used to sue, threaten, and attempt to control their neighbors. From Hillcrest to Portland, Ingleside, Aransas Pass, and Port Aransas, local citizens and communities have had to defend their air, water, and land rights from an entity that has spent public monies trying to force their projects on unwilling residents. This is not neighborly behavior, and it's an inappropriate use of public funds. Some of these include the hostage clause that was dated for the Port Aransas Marina, which would nullify that city's use of that marina if the city resisted proposed projects at Harbor Island. Another is the purchase of 3,000 acres in San Petch County between Ingleside and Aransas Pass by the port, removing that from the tax rolls and refusing to reveal their plans for that property to the people of those communities. And finally, the city of Corpus Christi recently reappointed a commission member who has stated that the port should just step in and take disputed properties in Hillcrest by eminent domain. Thank you so much for your last appointment to the port commission. The oversight that was so needed has finally arrived. Much more is needed after years of unquestioned excessive spending and disregard for the public's rights and concerns. We're hoping you can help restore the respectability and the trust that people should have for the port by appointing two unconnected, unconnected members to the commission today. Thank you very much, and I really love being in Noasis County and appreciate all the work you folks do. Oh, just to mention, I didn't bring in all the people that have signed petitions against the port. There are 30,896 that I left at home on a list. There's 1,061 thank you letters to the EPA for counteracting the TCEQ on the discharge at Harbor Island. And then we have this box, a Pandora's box, which I won't open, but contains thousands of people from all over the Coastal Bend, Corpus Christi, Texas, the United States, and other countries who are opposed to the industrialization of all our bays and estuaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Kookdenberg, Kookdenberg? I knew I was going to get that one wrong.
That's okay, that's okay. I had a student once that asked me if he could call me Madam, Miss Cucumber, and I said, "No, you may not." Good morning. My name is Pat Kuklenberg, and I live in Port Aransas at 410 Mercer. I want to thank you for your time. I've been moved this morning with all the people that have come before us, and congratulations on all your good work. And I do also love this community. Today, you have a really tough job of choosing your next two representatives. And I would like to also tell you, we really appreciate your last appointment. She's done a great job to oversee some of the work that needed to be done. We would hope, I would hope, my family would hope, and my neighbors would hope, that you would choose wisely someone who will represent the communities that have been impacted by the port's development. This is a time to choose new blood, not reelect or reinstate others that have had a chance to be on the board. Need to pass by the status quo and move forward. This is very nerve-wracking to be up here. I don't understand it. I have no trouble with children, but adults. Okay, so this is a time to select an applicant who will serve and protect the public interest, not themselves, not their employers, their business partners, their associates, or their family members. This is a time for integrity. And like Mr. Nelson's comment was, get it done right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Charlie Boone. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Charlie Boone. I live at, excuse me, 468 Sunset Ingleside on the Bay. I don't live in Noasis County, but I live in San Patricio County right next door. And the appointments you're going to make on the port commission greatly affect us. Let me, you know, that most of the rapid industrialization that's gone on, that's been fueled by the port, has been done in San Patricio County. There's already a lot of industrialization here in Noasis County. They purchased large land tracts there, and as was mentioned, took them off the tax rolls. They leased them back to other companies. They have a desal water project that's 80% of the water would end up going not to the public, but to the industrialization around McCambell Airport. The, the port is a public entity, as y'all know, like y'all are a public entity. They're a quasi-governmental entity set up. I used to work in community mental health centers that are also the same sort of thing. They, their boards get appointed by governing bodies, but they're, and they're kind of in the shadow, but they are kind of governmental. I think the direction of the port, it's a very large, large entity. It's starting to change. I was last night with one of the Commissioners and the CEO in Ingleside City Council. And the new CEO was answering questions very directly about what's going on and was open. We want to keep that same sort of openness going on with the new Commissioners that you appoint. I think it is a time to get new Commissioners to appoint. As a public entity, they should be not necessarily just oil and gas or business, but stewards of the public interest. They're not promoters of private industry. You should select Commissioners that are dedicated to the public interest, to public service, not those that are, that, whose livelihood and connections are wholly derived from the businesses that they're about to have to have as customers in the port. I appreciate all that you do, and I know you have hard decisions to make, many of them every week. So good luck with them. Merry Christmas, too.
Thank you. Bob Paulson.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Bob Paulson. I reside at 15226 Barataria Drive in Corpus Christi, Texas. I'm the Executive Director of the Coastal Bend Industry Association, a group that you might know better by its former name, Port Industries of Corpus Christi, a trade group that comprises of members from all of the large industry that works in and around and through the Port of Corpus Christi, as well as the port itself. I'm not here to talk about the port commission. I know, we know, that you know how serious a decision it is and that you're taking it very seriously and that you'll make the best decision possible for the region. Really, what I'm here to do today is just provide comment on your executive session, item A. And I'd like to request that you favor, your favorable consideration on CC Polymers' request for an extension to the terms of their current tax agreement. Now, CC Polymers is not a member of CBIA. Now, CC Polymers is not a member of CBIA, but it has been in Corpus Christi area for over 10 years in one form or another, right? Previously, M&amp;G, and then since 2018, CC Polymers, we have been watching that project very closely. We're familiar with its goals and also the difficulties that it's encountered through the years, and in short, we'll just say that the project has been through some tough times, and it's been tough for a long time. In particular, during CC Polymers' time, when they took over the project that had been dormant for over a year, they had to sort through a complex construction in detail to figure out exactly what they needed to do, and they got to work, and it seemed like no sooner than they did that than COVID hit, and they had to battle through that, and they did that for as long as they could, but finally had to suspend construction. And then they restarted construction right into the teeth of extremely high inflation, really not historic, but historic, really for our lifetime, adult lifetimes anyway, supply chain issues that started during COVID and really, for the most part, continue to this day in an extremely tight labor market, which has conspired to cause them to suspend their operations again. I believe they submitted a request for the, a notification to the county that they're not going to be complete by the time in their agreement, and they're requesting an extension. I believe it's in everybody's best interest that this project be completed, and given the extremely difficult circumstances that CC Polymers faced, it seems reasonable, to me at least, that an extension be granted, and I ask that you look favorably on their request. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you too. That's the end of my list. Is there anyone who wishes to speak, public comment that maybe didn't have an opportunity to sign up? If not, then that is the end of that. We will move on to item I, Board Appointments. Our first one up is the Oasis County Beach Management Advisory Committee. I'm sorry. We only received one letter of intent from the incumbents. There are five spots, open three new applicants. So we have one person who asked to be reinstated and three other applications.
Judge, I'm trying to catch up on that one. Hold on, I'm trying to find it. I apologize, I was listening to all that.
Sorry, I won in your agenda.
Motion to reappoint.
I'll second.
Well, I'm sorry, if we have five vacancies or five open?
Yeah, and there was a letter from one of the applicants that did come, or one of the, sorry, the incumbents that did come in, it came in late, but that was an oversight, and I know she didn't intend to reapply.
We opened it up from October 25th to December the 6th for two-year terms. One letter of intent was received from the incumbent, Floris Tissett. Three applications were received from Stephen Armstrong, Daniel Cornelius, and John Brant. Two other letters of intent were received after the December 6 deadline from incumbents, Fred Dotz. Notice was sent out to an incorrect, he didn't have his email address any longer, and Natasha Davis. So I believe Fred Dotz, by all means, with a different email, did not receive notice. The other was a late applicant, but.
Readvertise with one.
Yeah, we sent it from October 25th to December 6.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the number is for what we have available. I was originally just going to table this to look at it, because I didn't want to spend a lot of time, because we've got a lot today.
Five positions, terms are expiring December 31st, 2023.
And then you have applications?
From three, and one letter of intent from incumbent. So that would be four that have followed the procedure and are on time. The only allowance I would make possibly is Frederick Dotz because of the incorrect email. He did not receive a notice, so, but.
Judge, I don't know anything about any of these applicants at all, so.
If you want to table, it's your area, so.
I would like to, I'd like to get some, I just, I just would like to get some input from the Beach Management Chair and others, so I would like to just go ahead and table this. There'll be holdovers, so it won't have any effect on anybody, if that's.
Till the January 10th or 17th?
Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest the 17th, because the 10th is, we're going to be a month without a meeting, so I would suggest the second one.
Right, and then the, with the ability to reopen as well.
Yes.
So, that'd be my motion, Judge.
We have a motion to table to the 17th. I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Judge, number two, I want to put a hold on it till we do 3A3.
Hang on, Judge.
We can do it now if you want, but I'm going to hold that one till we do 3A3, because I, I want to make a motion on 3A3.
3A3, we can do that agenda item really quick. 3A3, we'll do it first.
Wait, what's 3A3? Hold on.
Discuss and consider the appointment process of Krista Spahn Health Board of Trustees and authorize in Oasis County Hospital District Board of Managers to select and appoint the board member and all related matters. He's taking it away from us. Where, they voted to take it away, then they gave it back. He is making a motion to send it back to this hospital district.
This one here, I just want to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion based on.
The item as printed here, I need to make it clear that it's not, the Commissioner's Court does not appoint.
Right.
So the item here as written, yes, okay.
Right.
Because I was going to bring that up, Judge. Although, we only recommend and they approve. Yes or no, mostly approve, yes, because they don't want some commissioners to be in a conflict with them, right? So my motion to this is that we just let the hospital district do the appointment and selection, because they're already dealing with Spahn on $21 million and everything else, so why not do this? I mean, there's no need for us to kind of do a recommendation for their approval. I mean, but, so my motion would be, what's here, that we pass it back to the hospital district to make that appointment and selection for the Spahn Hospital Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Discussion, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, Mr. Hip is here, if maybe he can provide us some clarity on what his board is. He just walked in, we're talking about item 3A3.
It's an advisory board.
About the appointment process, and just wanted to hear what was, what's your board's feeling on this, and what's been the history behind this?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I was hiding out in the conference room across the hall, so maybe I didn't hide out long enough. So I got in on the tail end of what y'all were discussing, and so the, the way the process has worked in the past, and then I'm going to kind of start you back there and get you to where we are today, is in the past, the Commissioner's Court nominated people to the hospital district board, for the hospital district board to consider for appointment to the Spahn Board. And under our agreements with Spahn, the hospital district is the entity that has the right to make three appointments of 15 onto the Spahn Board. So in the past, back in Judge Borchard's days, the appointments circulated through the court. In other words, the board only accepted nominations from the court. And so a couple of months ago, back in October, the board took action to not accept, if you will, nominations from the court. And so there was some pushback on that, and I think I told you all in one meeting that the hospital district would, I would take that back to the board for that to be reconsidered. And they did, in fact, reconsider that, and they rescinded that action. So what that meant is, we went from, we basically went back to the process of the court nominating people to the board for consideration of appointment to the Spahn Board.
I have a question, though, with that process before. So if we recommend, do y'all, does your hospital district also recommend, or do you only, I thought I heard something in your comments, where you only considered the applicants that we sent you?
Under the scenario that they adopted and they rescinded, it was a process where only the board would take in nominations. So under the process that we went back to that we exist, is that the board's going to rely on Commissioner's Court to provide nominations to it. So there won't, there won't be a secondary or an alternate route for that to happen. And so the way it was left is the hospital district board rescinded that action so that the nominations would go back to the procedure we've been using for all these years, where the court made the nomination. And I would say, over the course of years, that the hospital district board has only turned down one nomination that came from the court, because that particular member was up for a reappointment, but he wasn't attending Spahn Board meetings. And so they turned it down. We sent a note, the letter, back to the court and said, could you nominate someone else? Because the board declined to appoint this person.
Well, that clarified a lot for me, because I thought, I agreed with Commissioner Gonzalez, if we just send you a recommendation, then it's kind of a wasted vote. But if you only consider the recommendations we send, then it's not a wasted vote.
No, because that's all we sent them. I mean, if we sent them, if we were sending them three people to choose from, they would have to make up their mind which one they want.
Yes.
But we narrowed it down to one, so they got no choice, except for vote yes or no on that one.
Right.
So wouldn't it be better than to be, continue to be involved in some way, and maybe instead of just rescinding the entire process that's worked very well for 25 years, wouldn't it be a better thing to go and say, we'll give you three recommendations for one spot, and you choose from the three, so that, or something of that nature? Because we are very involved in this community with Spahn. We are very involved with the indigent community, the indigent care. We are the ones who delegate the responsibility to the hospital district for this indigent care, but we as a county, Oasis County, is responsible for indigent care. We just use the hospital district as our vehicle. So to not be involved in what goes on with Spahn as elected officials versus appointed officials, which is a completely different standard, meaning we are responsible to the public, the board that we appoint is responsible to the hospital district, and they're not, they don't stand for election, they do wonderful jobs, and without them, we couldn't, we couldn't exist, and it's a strong, great board, and you do a wonderful job. But I think just to throw the baby out with the bathwater with, for no reason, like there's nothing wrong here. Nothing went wrong, there's not been a problem, there's not been an issue. It's just somebody on the hospital district board wanted to change the process and figured out how to, you know, do that, and yeah, and I was one of the ones who pushed back. So let me, let's be clear and transparent. You bet I did, because I don't think you just change a system that ain't broke unless there's a reason to, or unless you don't have a system. Like, you know, we changed system, we've created things around here because we didn't have a system. But this has worked, this has been a partnership, this has been a partnership for 25 years, but for many, more than that. So why don't we just say, hey, if there's one spot available, we'll give you three choices, or two choices, or something to where we're still involved. If we need to tweak it, I just don't think it's appropriate to just to throw the whole thing out. I mean, that doesn't make any sense, because nothing went wrong to get us to this point, so.
Commissioner, and the board did rescind that. They stepped back from that, and they heard the message that y'all had, and they addressed it. If we're going to keep following the path of what we've done in the past, you all have always sent us one nomination, not more than one. And so if we're going to stick with the past, then let's try to stick to one nomination, if you can, to come to the, to the district board. You know, y'all, the, your predecessors and now you all wanted a role in, in the process of deciding, if you will, who the Spahn Board members were. And so this was the mechanism that we came up with, is that the board, even though the board, under the terms of the contract, because we're the party that's involved with Spahn, not the county, is that, you know, the hospital board does the three appointments, but we gave the Commissioner's Court sort of a place in the front end of all this to start cycling through the, through the funnel, if you will, who the candidates were going to be for consideration. So.
Another question, Johnny, real quick, before you get off. So if we send you the one, and you don't choose that person, you deny that one, do y'all then go out for applicants, or do you send it back to us for applications again?
Well, if we stick with what we've done, Judge, in the past, we would send you a letter saying that the board declined to appoint that nomination and ask you for another one. Because in the one instance that we turned someone down, that was the mechanism that we came back, because it, it doesn't really make sense to say, well, we can't appoint this one, because they, let's just say they don't go to meetings, and then we go find somebody else on our own. It kind of takes it out of the process, and if we're going to go back and use the process we've used in the past, then let's just use it.
Okay. Thank you. That answered mine.
And this is really an advisory board, right?
The Spahn Board? Well, you know, I'm not an officer of Spahn, but I can tell you a little bit about how their board works, is there's all kinds of boards, okay? They, and they have different responsibilities, but the assets at Krista Spahn are owned by Krista's Health. And Krista's Health is an entity that's based in Irving, Texas. And so they have a local board here, but the board, the local board's role does not involve the finances or the management of the hospital. They oversee quality assurance, they oversee some other things. So in one sense, it's, that they're not a complete board in terms of they don't decide how the assets get used, but they do have another thing, another involvement, so they're not really an advisory board, because they actually do have responsibilities. They approve medical staff appointments, they review their quality assurance program, that kind of stuff. But when it comes to actually controlling the use of the assets and the funds in Spahn, that, that's a function that comes from Krista's Health. And in fact, the top administrators at the local Spahn are Krista's Health employees. They're not Krista Spahn's employees. And I don't know if I answered your question, but it's kind of complicated how it works.
It's still advisory board, because they don't make any decisions financially or.
Correct.
Operational or whatever.
They don't make any money decisions, that's right.
Kind of like it used to be, and I was going to, so it's only been, it's only occurred one time where there's been, I guess, a rejection of the name, the nomination that was given. I mean, it's, in nominating processes, it's usually the reverse. You have the appointed body that makes a recommendation to the statutory body or the, you know, I've seen it on the city side where it's kind of a reverse order, right? When you, when the city manager appoints a police chief or fire chief, he or she still has to take that name to the council for ultimate approval. Here, we're going a little different, backwards, where we would send it to a body that we appoint, which is okay, but I think, you know, it's worked, right? Nothing has changed.
It has, yes.
There was some pushback, and I think of anything, you know, even though the role has been changed and limited on our local influence, to still have somebody, or three people, coming from Oasis County through Oasis County Hospital District is important, right? I think it's important with, with looking at all this emergency department residency program issue that we had, it's important that the county worked through this. And I, I've never heard any board member ever mention to me about, there was a name that's been brought forward since I've been on this court, that they rejected or did not want, right? If it means giving them options, fine, but I just don't see the need to change it right now, when, you know, you're still, y'all just kind of worked to finalize that agreement between Spahn and our doctors, and we have so many other things to deal with. I mean, I thought it got fixed. I'm a little wondering why we're doing this today. I'd rather just keep as is, 25-plus years that we've been doing this, and it's worked, right? In these 20, I mean, in the last seven years, I'll ask from my own perspective, have we had any names rejected?
Not since you've been on, Commissioner, it was before your time, I think.
Okay. So, I mean, it's worked, and I think we have a very different board, a very responsive board to our needs, and so, okay, just my, my two cents.
I think it's a, in my opinion, Commissioners, it's a process that works well, given the circumstances of our arrangement, because it, like you said, Commissioner, it's an interesting thing where it's the hospital district that, because we're the ones who have the funds and taxing ability, like you all, to fund indigent care and have the contracts with Spahn. But back when, Commissioner's Court, like y'all are today, want, want a role in the process. And so this is what we came up with. It's kind of juxtaposed about how it usually works, but it is a process that has worked.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, or all those in favor say?
Restate the motion again, I'm sorry, Judge.
The motion is to give the authority to the hospital district to take it away from us, yes. A motion by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Mades.
No.
Hernandez.
Hernandez, sorry, sorry. You were speaking, so. So, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? I guess the two with the motion, are you saying aye?
In favor of the motion?
Yes.
Aye.
I do as well, Judge.
Yes, and those opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
I'm a no, yes. Three, two, the motion fails. And it was after clarification, let me be clear, because I felt the same way until I realized that we do do something there, it's not a wasted time.
So, to be clear, Commissioners, Judge, the appointment process, the appointment belongs to the Hospital District.
We just make recommendations.
We make the recommendation.
Right, and so, there is no authority that the county can grant to take it back. It is their contract with SPON. So, I don't, I don't want to.
And nothing changed. We're, we're going back to the way it's been for 25 years, so.
Judge, could I then make, if we're going back to the board appointment, since we held on that, I'd like to make a motion to table that, because I, I would definitely like to open that one back up and see about making sure and solicit some additional nominations. I honestly, I didn't catch, I thought the, the, the person who's been there who's served us so well for so many years would reapply, didn't know that wasn't going to happen, because I know there were others that would probably be interested in that, so I'd like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting and reopen that as well, so that we have the opportunity to hear from.
Well, everybody had, had a chance to submit their name, so.
It's a motion, you don't have, it's just a motion.
We have a motion to table to the next meeting, or the January 17th, for them to open it up for more.
January's, whatever, yeah, 17th.
Are we talking about the board appointment?
Yes.
Or are we talking about the three, A3?
The three, A3 is already done, we voted it.
Number two, board appointment.
Board appointments, too. We already voted on the other.
On I2.
I2. And we don't know if, are the current incumbent is interested? Do we know, Johnny? Do you know?
They didn't.
I mean, I know they didn't, but.
Yeah.
I mean, with, with the changes of, the uncertainty of, you know, was this going to change, did that make it any difference that you were aware of? Just, and if not, if not, I would rather proceed, but if there is, then I would say yes, let's reopen, but.
I think, given the back and forth with not knowing when the Hospital District at one point said they were going to take it away from us, and the information going back and forth, I think it warrants opening back up, because we weren't really clear, and y'all's meeting was.
Yesterday.
A month after our, or at least after our meeting, when it was stated that you had voted to take it away before you gave it back, so.
Commissioner Mades, the, the incumbent we're talking about is term limited.
Okay.
She's reached her, her three, they can serve three, three times, and she's reached her limit. So, if, she could reapply, but she would start running up against SPON's bylaws, and they, and they have a three-cycle limit.
Well, I, I mean, I get, want to get more people, but hey, you should apply, right?
I agree.
You should put in your name, and so, as long as that was clear, that was my only concern. So, I would rather just move forward on the nomination, if that's a motion, or.
I don't think the incumbent wasn't interested, she just couldn't reapply.
She couldn't reapply, okay.
The motion right now is to table, do we have a second? To table to the January 17th meeting. I'll, I'll second that motion, just because of the confusion that we've had over the last couple of months with, we said we had the appointment, then the Hospital District took it away, then they gave it back to us just this past week. So, people really didn't know if they were applying, if it really was worth anything, because we didn't have that authority at that time. All those in favor of tabling to the 17th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
All those opposed, same sign. We have one nay, two nays?
No.
Were you a yes, Commissioner Hernandez?
No, I'm a no.
You're a no, yes, so, we're moving forward, it doesn't get tabled, so then I will accept a motion to appoint our one applicant, to recommend to the Hospital District, excuse me, not appoint, yes.
I recommend that we accept the applications, Yvonne, you know, his application.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Judge, I'm going to abstain, based on the reasons you stated, that I don't think this process was clear in any way, shape, or form, and so, I'm going to abstain for that. I don't know the lady, she's probably great, so I don't want to vote against her, but I'll just abstain for those reasons.
I understand, thank you. And the motion passes, yes. We had one abstain, the rest ayes, yes. I am going to go back, it seems, I got a notice that I failed to call upon, I didn't see her hand up, did you not see it either? Susie Saldana wanted to speak on public comment, so I am going to call on her, I'm very sorry that we missed that. But I will give you, state your name and address and your three minutes, I think you know the procedure well.
Very well. My name is Susie Luna Saldana, I live at 4710 Hubble, and I am a citizen of Corpus Christi. And I wanted to speak to you about your board appointments today. And basically, because I heard all those ladies talk to you about what they felt, I can tell you why they came to you with the last Commissioner that you appointed, because during the city council meetings, you went up there and gave them your card. So, I want you to take a look at what you're going to do. And basically, I would like to trust in each and every one of you, because I believe that you will make the right decision for the right reasons. To reappoint someone that's doing a good job is not wrong. To look at the person like Brian Gully, that has done a terrific job for the port, and that means it has moved the port forward, is not right to take him away because of some personal feelings, or for whatever other reason that there may be, to go against him. Another person that I highly recommend is Tony Lamantilla. As a citizen of Corpus Christi, he's done a lot for this community. So, all I'm asking is that you all do the right thing for the right reason. I want you to take a look at what's going on. It is the port that you're talking about, one of the best in the country, and it has been made that way by the Commissioners that you have there. You have appointed one Commissioner that has been very destructive to the sport, very destructive, and we're still in the middle of an investigation on that one, as far as I'm concerned. But, to appoint someone is to appoint someone on behalf of the citizens, not on behalf of yourselves. So, that's what I'm asking you to do. Look at what you're doing. I trust each and every one of you. I may have differences on everything, on other things with you all, but what I do not have is that you have the right reasons to appoint the right persons. So, please, let your conscience be your guide. Let what you believe in and your representation of the people be the ones you appoint, not who you want, but who is best for the port and the citizens of Corpus Christi. Thank you for your time, and I pray to God you make the right decision.
Thank you, and once again, I apologize for not seeing that you were wanting to speak, so, thank you. Going back to item number three, Nuñez County Civil Service Commission, there were no letters of intent, no applications, so we need a motion to reopen for applicants.
So.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Question, Judge.
Oh, discussion, yes, go ahead.
Chairman, are you here to talk on this issue?
Not really.
Were you aware that your letter wasn't sent? I'm not, I'm, I don't want to engage.
You didn't even reapply, yes.
You need to reapply, just in case you didn't know, since you're here.
I did not reapply, because I've been there 18 years.
Oh, okay.
I think. Boy, it's been.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Well, 18's not enough, you needed to go 20.
Even for real, no?
I'll, I'll only do 20 if you pay me the next two years. Now, I've enjoyed being there for 18 years. When we started this back 18 years ago, we had 29 grievances. Since then, we haven't met for the last three years.
We have no grievances? Nothing?
No, that, that means that your supervisors are doing a good job.
Thank you.
All right?
Good to know.
We did have a problem about six years ago, and Judge Lord Neils made the changes with my recommendation, and had us taking care of it. Like I said, we haven't met for three years, but because a recommendation of Judge Neils to go ahead and meet every quarterly, just to approve to the workers that we do meet in case there is a grievance, so. Having said that, I want to thank you for allowing me to be the chairman for 18 years, and I've enjoyed it, okay?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do I get a back?
Can we just, can we just reappoint him anyway, Judge?
Yeah.
He's a holdover until we.
He's a holdover until we get somebody.
That's right, you're still there until, yeah.
You might make those 20 years.
Do I have, do I get a Christmas present?
So, we have a motion and a second to reopen that for applications. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
When are you going to close?
Oh, we have.
17th.
The 17th, close it?
Well, no, 17th.
Yeah, so it has to be the 10th, then, if we're going to bring it back on the 17th, maybe?
Close on the 10th, then appoint on the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how many do we need to fill there?
There's three. And nobody reapplied, nobody.
Okay.
They're all out. Moving to item four, in Nuñez County Emergency Service District One, we have two letters of intent and two spots.
Motion to reappoint?
Yeah, who's he, is, is this one, is this yours, John? I don't know who's.
Received from the incumbents.
Second.
Egenberg and Rodriguez. A third application was received. We have a motion and a second to reappoint.
No, you, you read the wrong.
Oh, am I on the wrong one?
It's number one, it's the one in Robstown. That's mine. Second, John's motion.
Mine's not, okay. So, we have a motion to reappoint.
Tate and Torres, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Mades, okay.
Danny Tate and ACBO Torres, yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, with the other one. Nuñez County Emergency Service District Two, two letters of intent, one new applicant, and two spots are available.
Judge, I would make a motion to reappoint those who are serving, the board applicant that is also applying is outstanding, but it's, we've got two incumbents that have also done a good job, so I would make a motion to reappoint those two.
That's the Egenberger and Rodriguez?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Next, item six, Nuñez County Emergency Service District Number Three, two letters of intent, three spots, and we will have to reopen as well, but do you all want to make a motion to appoint the two letters of intent?
Motion to reappoint, yes, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint the two incumbents that would like to be reappointed. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Motion to reopen.
For the one spot.
The one vacancy.
Yes.
Second.
Reopen the same dates, and January 10th, bring back on the 17th. Is that okay with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Did we already vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, again, just to make sure. Nuñez County Emergency Service District Four, two letters of intent, one new applicant, two spots available.
Yes, Judge, I'd like to make a motion to reinstate Mr. Donald Herman.
And Mr. Atwood, those two?
Mr. Wilson to replace Mr. Atwood.
Okay, do, we want to do those separate, since one's an incumbent, if we're going to?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to have some discussion on the replacement.
Can you separate those two? Let's do the one that's a letter of intent, then, first.
Which one are you wanting, which incumbent are you wanting to reapply?
Mr. Herman will stay on.
So, okay, so, can we, I just want to, okay, I support Mr. Herman being reappointed, if you're doing that separately.
You can second, we're doing it separately. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Herman to the EST Four, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And then, your motion was to appoint.
Christopher Wilson to replace Mr.?
Atwood.
And.
And I'll second for discussion, yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for discussion, is?
I guess I just have to ask, since he's the president of the board, I'm just curious as to.
And he has a letter of intent?
And he's like, yeah, I'm just curious as to, if there's an issue, or, because I haven't heard of any issues out there, but I, I'm just, I'm not saying no, I'm just asking why we're doing it.
Well, I've gotten replies from others that Mr. Atwood hasn't made a, a meeting in quite a while, has a hard time getting or going to the meetings. He's been there a long time, and I appreciate that, but, and doesn't do, do the district any good if he cannot attend the meetings that are important for them to go to, and I'm.
Sorry, I can barely hear you.
He doesn't, he doesn't attend.
Just doesn't attend meetings.
He doesn't attend to get the certificates that he's supposed to get.
And, and have you confirmed this with the Chief Bluntser?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Okay. Then there is a motion and a second. Do you have any other questions that you want to add to that?
Based on.
To appoint Mr. Wilson?
Based on that representation that he's not attending meetings, and I will support Commissioner Hernandez's motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, Nuñez County Emergency Service District Number Six. There are two positions with terms that expire December 2023. We had, two letters of intent were received from the incumbents McNair and Cadanya.
Cadena.
Cadena.
A motion to?
Reappoint.
Reappoint?
We have a motion to reappoint the two, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. I know the next item up on the agenda is our Port Commission, Port of Corpus Christi Authority. We had said that, and we told all of the applicants to be here at 1:00 PM, to try to give everybody the time to be here and opportunity to speak, so we will be coming give everybody the time to be here and opportunity to speak, so we will be coming back to that later. Moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that someone wants to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? We'll give you a minute to look through that.
Judge, I would make a motion to pass all unless someone has one to pull.
Second.
Wait a second, I think I had a clarification on A, on the minutes. Did we get that checked out, ladies in the office? There was a-
You wanna pull that one, Judge?
Yeah, pull A.
Pull A?
Yes.
All, then my motion would be to pass the consent agenda other than item two A.
We have a second, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And A is just our minutes, but there were two different ways that it was when we changed it from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. I think the minutes had it tabled indefinitely, and it wasn't tabled, I just wanted, just the wording to be changed in that, that it was just moved from the consent to the regular agenda, it was not tabled indefinitely.
November fifteenth minutes.
The November fifteenth minutes, yeah. Just a clarification, nothing major.
And which, which number, Judge, I'm sorry?
Two Y needs clarification. Bob Hope here moved to regular, their item was not tabled indefinitely.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Okay.
Good catch, I would make a motion to amend.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to three, our regular agenda, three A1 is the receive updates on the Bob Hope here project. I believe Scott has an update for us today. Or, sorry. Yes.
Good morning. I'm gonna turn it over to our engineer, program manager, and myself and Christine are here to answer any questions that you may have as far as the permitting. Permitting follows a parallel track with design, but it's independent of design. So at that, I'll let Scott.
And stick around after this, I'm gonna pull your other item up right afterwards, item elevens for you, so, yes.
Good, good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Scott Harris with Lockwood, Andrews, and Noonan. Here to give you a quick update on the status of the Bob Hope here project. Sixty percent design has been completed and reviewed now. We're officially complete with the sixty percent design. Comments have been returned to the design engineer. We've had discussions between my review team and the design engineer. At this time, Jacob's Engineering's the design engineer. We have, they're proceeding to one hundred percent design, which effectively limits the ninety percent design. They're gonna proceed, expedite the rest of, or the remainder of the design, eliminate the ninety percent submittal, and move straight to the hundred. That will speed up things a little bit. One of the, one of the items that they're gonna accommodate in their design is the elimination of the costly construction trestle. So by removing that, or the need for that extra construction trestle, it could effectively eliminate little over $2 million worth of costs. But keep in mind, Judge and Commissioners, that ultimately that decision for, to, for construction trestles up to the contractor, not necessarily the design engineer, but the engineer is making accommodations in their design to allow for multiple types of construction and not just, not just that. So with the elimination of that trestle, it could save possibly a little, little over $2 million. Some of the comments, we returned to the design engineer, were kind of centered around O and M for, for Scott Cross and his team, easier maintenance, easier operations, so in the spirit of trying to improve the O and M in the future, kind of taking care of the pier, a lot of the comments were centered around that. And Jacob's Engineering's agreed to incorporate those into the design, in the hundred percent design. So with that, on Monday, the Parks Board met and approved proceeding to the hundred percent design. The next submittal is the final one hundred percent design submittal. We'll have a quick two-week review period. That will happen at the beginning of May, or beginning of April, sorry, the beginning of April. This morning, Jacob's acknowledged that they're gonna try to expedite that even sooner. So they're gonna work on that as, as quick as possible. Their schedule says April 6th for the hundred, but again, they'll try to expedite that. So we can essentially see Bob Hope here ready to bid no later than the beginning of May, end of April. So those are my updates for the court today.
Perfect, thank you. We're excited, get that moving and going, yes.
Judge.
And the review period, Scott, well, whoever, is it gonna be an intentional public review? I mean, is there gonna be any kind of public hearing? Is it something we do just during court, or is it just open? I mean, how does that process go? I mean, the decision's already been made, right? And so I'm not trying to-
It'll come back here.
It'll come back here, yeah. Okay, that's all, as long as we let the public know that, because I know there's still a lot of eyes on that, and this court has made its decision. I don't see us moving, changing it, right? We've already decided, but at least I know there's still a lot of people that wanna see what that final design is gonna look like, so. I just wanted to make sure that that's broadcast as much as possible, as early as possible, so people can put it on their calendars and, and plan to participate.
Yeah, we've, we've had plenty of delays in this, as you know. We just, we wanna get things, we wanna get things going and get to the, get to the finals.
Too many delays.
Thank you.
Judge, I have one thing I wanna add to this timeline. Right now, our federal permit is kinda stuck over at National Marine Fishery Services, and I'm, and for a year and a half or so, I've been telling you all, I've been concerned about that federal agency. So Christine is working with me to try to front-load our documents as best we can with biological assessments to try to convince them to do informal consultation versus formal. They're wanting to do formal. If they get into formal, it could, it could delay our permit even longer than a hundred percent design specs. And so US Fish and Wildlife here locally, Mary Case Grupa, who y'all know who I work with, and Jackie Robinson of TPWD, they've done informal review, which makes it go a lot faster. So that, I've, I've given you all that timeline that Christine and I put together, let you show you all the steps since 2021 on permitting, but I don't have a lot more I can do other than try to front-load documents and showing we're doing our due diligence within TNE-listed, Threatened and Endangered List of Species. So I can't make any guarantees on that.
But we, this court has provided you all the resources to go and deal with that.
Yes, sir.
So I just think that needs to be added on, because every time this comes up, there is all this concern with the public, justifiably so, but in regards to those delays, that's what needs to be understood, is there, we have, this court has done everything we can do, and the Parks Board has done everything they can do to provide all the resources needed to go and fight that issue, but we can't control a federal agency.
Yes, sir.
So that, that now needs to be understood by the public, and it'll get convoluted, and it'll get picked apart, and people will say, but the truth of the matter is, and I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Harris said, because I need, I need them to be quicker on the other, but, but in this regard, at the end of the day, it's all up to this federal agency, and if they continue to provide delays, then there's nothing more this court can do. I mean, certainly, we can call our federal representatives, and we probably need to do that, and we'll, we'll, you know, let's, I would, you know, make a motion that we do something of that nature. I don't know if you need to make a motion, we just need to do it, but at, at the same time, I know y'all have been working really hard to overcome that, but I do appreciate you continuing to bring it up, but I do think it's important to note that this court has given you what you asked for to, to fight this, which was some funding resources and some other things as well. Go ahead.
So Commissioners, I'll say, what, I'll take that date of April 6th, and I'll, already was making plans to send an email to both the project manager at the Core NIMPs, and they haven't engaged US Fish yet, all the way up to Nick Laskowski, the chief, and establish that date, and then backdate it so that we can set goals for their internal deadlines for the different steps they have to take. We did this on another project, but if you want, you're saying you wanna move to April 6th?
Well, no, I don't like April 6th, I'm gonna go back to that in a second. But while you're up there, I wanna, yeah, I'm not done, I just-
Having, having an end date, that's what we can communicate to them and say, this is, you know, when it'll be ready, so you'll be holding up construction bid if you don't get everything done, but how, communicating that date to them, and then helping them backdate the different steps they'll have to take will at least give us some milestones to work with, and that should help, so let me know that different date and we can communicate.
We'll go, I'll go back to that, but I, I do think that's important to note, because at the end of the day, I'm not satisfied with the April 6th date. I think we've made great progress, and I think, Judge, you've spent some time with me, and we've worked on this, and I appreciate your time on this, and I know the court's interested in it, that, that's savings, it's potentially a savings could, and I think we can come back to that, that's, that's our dollars, and that's big time, and that's a, that's a big concession and a big deal that the design team, that we all, a lot of people worked on this and, and came to this conclusion to go to the hundred percent and, and to, and to really work to reduce costs, to save money, because the concern is, is that even if we save this money, we may need this money because of the rising cost of construction.
Supplies and construction, everybody, their costs are coming in that direction.
What we're trying to do is avoid coming back to the court for any additional funding on the pier, to make sure we have the money in there, and this two and a half million dollar potential savings may be needed just to offset what we're afraid that the construction cost increases could be, so that, that's a, that's a big deal in regards to the pier. Scott, I'm just gonna tell you to relay, I'm not satisfied, I appreciate the efforts, and we, you know, you got about, we got about ninety percent, no, Scott Harris, sorry, Scott, thank you, we got about ninety percent there. April 6th is not acceptable, you know, to me for a hundred percent design. I think we should, we should be farther along on this. There are reasons that we're not, and, and that has partially to do with, with all, some of this back and forth and trying to save money, and I get that, but some of it was, some of these comments came in after we voted, and there are some things that, you know, that I've addressed with you and the rest of that, the team, that I'm not satisfied with what's happened there. And so we've tried to mitigate the damage as best we can on this, but at the end of the day, April 6th, this isn't acceptable, and I think you need to relay that back to the engineers to say, it needs to be back sooner than that, and they need to come back with a better date, and, and respectfully, and I don't, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but if they need to work through Christmas and New Year's to get this back to a better date, then do it. We're paying a lot of money to get this pier done, we're paying a lot of money to your company to manage it, we're paying a lot of money to the engineers to do pier review, we're paying a lot of money to consultants to make sure this is done right, we're sure paying a lot of money to the engineers who are designing it, so if they gotta work a little extra and a little harder, and I'm not trying to be the Grinch who stole Christmas, but if that's what has to happen to get this sooner than later, so that they can then go give that deadline to the agency that they're working with, because then, i- if it's not us anymore, and it's a federal agency, as it could be, then, then we're gonna have to have a new tack, which is to call our federal representatives and to do everything we can to get them to, to do what they need to do. So I, I, I think that deadline needs to be at least thirty days sooner, if not more, so I'm gonna be looking for that design in the first part of March, not the first part of April. That's, that's at least my expectation. If we need to make that as a motion, I don't know if anybody on the court objects.
It's a good motion, because we're going, Jacob's already over two years. I mean, it's been a long time. Every time he comes here, he wants more money, so.
So we have, you're seconding his motion, and we're good with that.
Yeah, I, I, I think the motion in the direction of the court is, and if I could, if I felt like I could do it even sooner than March 1st, I would, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna make a motion then that, that they bring back that hundred percent design to this court in a public matter, to the Parks Board first as normal, and then to us by our meeting, so that, that they're done by March 1st. And done, Scott, means y'all reviewed, I mean, all of it, like, y'all, it's gotta come forward with everybody in unison of, we're done, this is the recommendation, so that's the motion to bring, to be done by March 1st, from the engineer.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, so good luck, and we hope that even sooner would not be a problem.
Yeah, that's clear direction, that's pretty clear direction, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez, and the rest of the court.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, so you don't have to leave, Scott Cross. Discuss and consider the selection of Anchor LLC for Engineering Services for Packery Channel Shoreline Enhancement Project, and then authorize the execution of an engineering services contract for $414,806, and this is grant-funded, so.
Grant-funded?
Yes.
And Alex, the superstar attorney that Jenny has, has already vetted all this, and she takes good care of us in coastal parks.
Judge, which number are you on, I apologize?
Eleven, three A11. I'll make the motion to select Anchor and authorize the execution of the contract.
Just say, a second, and just tell us where the funding's coming from, just so the public knows.
It's the Project of Special Merit GLO GOMISA funds.
GOMISA funds.
Hundred percent, no match.
Yes, no match, we checked before we put it on here.
It's the county Packery Channel Nature Park grant.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank y'all, Merry Christmas, if I don't see ya.
Now going back to three A2, receive an update from the hospital district relating to the emergency medicine residency program. Mr. Hip, you have the microphone again?
Good morning again, Commissioners. As you all know, the hospital district was asked by Commissioners Court to help address the situation of SPON deciding to terminate their emergency medicine residency program. We took that on, and we've held several meetings, lots of public comments, you all have too. I think over time, you all, the court adopted two resolutions in support of the program. So to fast-forward you to December 1st, the hospital district approved the term sheet or the deal points, however you wanna refer to them, and those should be enclosed in your, in your packet. And then yesterday, the hospital district took the final step of approving the letter agreement, which the deal points are embedded into, and they gave me the authority to sign the, the letter agreement when SPON does so. So in conclusion, the hospital district has stepped up and addressed the needs in the community for the maintaining this emergency medicine program. It, it's basically a six-year process that funds two emergency medicine residency cycles at SPON, but I will tell you, Commissioners, that all this disagreement does is buy us time. And so we basically bought a, a two-cycle, which is the equivalent of six years, process. The hospital district has committed a total of $21,250,000 to this process to fund the direct costs of the emergency medicine and training program. And so when I say that, that what we've reached has bought us time, it has, but there, there are two things that need to be worked out long-term if we're gonna continue, the community wants to continue supporting this program, and the, the two things are, first, we gotta have a teaching facility, you gotta have a place who's willing to take the residents in, and allow them to use their facilities for their training program, and of course, and probably the most important one is, we need a long-term funding source for the program. Now, we've, we've got ourselves six years, the hospital district today has the resources to cover the 21 million. Down the road, all kinds of things can happen during the six-year period that could change the path of this, although the letter agreement locks down a lot of the terms. And if you have questions about those, I have our counsel, our transaction counsel here with me this morning, Adam Robinson, and he can help answer those. But just to conclude my remarks, as we, we have addressed this, it's not a permanent solution. We bought ourselves six years to work through this, and the two main things we're gonna face is having a teaching facility and having a long-term funding for it.
Thank you, and we appreciate all the hard work that went into all of that, the time and efforts, and the committee members here as well, your efforts in helping to facilitate this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and Judge, I've said this publicly several times, and without you putting together this committee, I don't know if this would have happened. I mean, you really helped amp up the, the attention that it deserved, gave an area for input, and the, the members you put on there, and I'm not saying, because I've got a put on there, I do appreciate you, your consideration placing me on there, but the ability to operate out of the public scrutiny with a smaller group that's still represented all the interest, where it will still have an open line of communication between SPON and the hospital district and, and the committee itself, really helped set up for this success, and we have talked for a while now, since we've been meeting the last month and a half or so, that we know that this may not be the ultimate final solution, and we know things change, and this is not critical, SPON, we appreciate them going to this extent to allow for the interviews to even be happening today, how appropriate that they are. But, but this is about having those lines of communication open, so if SPON says, you know what, we've given six years, but reality is, we know that we need to really start finding an out solution within the next year or two, it's in place. We've got a little buffer, but we can continue to work as a community to try to find some other solution. So that's all we ask, it's just a heads-up, right? As you stay connected with SPON on the community's behalf, that you let us know, obviously, that our doctors know, and that, and that, that's gonna be the most important part, is that we don't get caught by surprise again, and that we're given enough time to work through this. And I think that that's kind of what this plan is in place, it's not perfect, like, nothing ever seems to be when we try to work on these kind of deals, but at least that we, we have saved the day so far. We have a six-year buffer, less than that when you really talk about transition, but I appreciate all the work you've done, and all the, all the doctors and input from the community, and I'm sure this time and time again, no matter where I went in this community for those last two months almost, everywhere I've gone, the main conversation has been, what about the doctors, what about the residency program in our community? During Thanksgiving, we were in Robstown, where all the senior centers get together for our annual Thanksgiving luncheon, and all the seniors from all parts of the community, from the county were represented there, and all of them asked about that. They all knew what was going on, and it was so important to them, because they feel it, they see it so much often with them and their families, and so this has been one of those, those attention grabbers that we've had to jump right in, and like I've told the doctors before, you know, my, my arc on grazing anatomy has ended so far, but I do promise to come back for guest appearances every once or twice a year, and I think that that may happen, because we may not, this may not be the final solution for SPON, but we do appreciate that they have worked in good faith to make this happen, and of course, the hospital district, the committee, and all of the doctors who provided input. Of course, you, as well, Johnny, you've taken a lot of heat from both sides, and we know that, and it would only have happened with you as well, but especially thanks to the judge, because that really- But especially thanks to the judge, because that really set the standard from day one when we had our room full of the white of the white coats, and from there, we were able to make this happen. So thank you.
I just want to say, Judge, thank you for sending the committee, but I'm, you know, I've already I've said this before, and I told you, Johnny, I'm still not happy with the twenty-one million dollars. Six years is not very long for twenty-one million dollars. And then we are paying twice for some services. I really want to know where we're paying twice for some services. I'm still like to have the report that I requested to find out for sure if we're not paying twice for some services. So, well, we need residency ER, you know, I'm still, and I have a passion for it because I have I have a personal reason, that we still need specialty doctors, still need primary doctors, more than probably ER doctors, because I think that those are the ones that stay, those are the ones that take care of all your family, those are the ones that they're there when you need them and to keep you, bring you back home. So I want to thank the hospital district for for coming to bat, you know, and did what you did. And I know there was push and shove probably from both sides, but I just want to say that I wouldn't, I I my deal for twenty-one was not a good deal. You know, I could have said maybe halfway, I mean, we meet you halfway, halfway, ten million, and that's still a lot. But, you know, this is the way, you know, I feel, and I've told you that before, I mean, we met, and after how I felt about it, you know, and I think I said it last time when we met here also, that I couldn't really support hundred percent of twenty-one million dollars. No, and I just know I just want to know later on, between now and probably next year, do we're gonna have a report of the how many after the graduation, how many doctors stay, how many go, how many leave, and where they go? I'd like to have that kind of report, because the hospital district is paying for all this. I'd like to have a report after graduat- after the graduations. So what are we doing, where what's happening, where are they where are they moving to, what are we keeping them here? That's what I'd like to know. I think we're investing, I think we need to have a some kind of a contract or an agreement that they have to stay here for two years after they graduate. And then we're paying twenty-one million dollars, I think that should be somewhere in the contract, that they gotta stay here for two years. And I and I really agree with you, as the commissioner, the hospital district, on the medical facility for training, education, I think that's one of the best projects we can go, where everybody has to come in and pitch in and kind of bring something to the table. So I don't think it should be all the hospital district. I think everybody, if we want a facility, I think everybody needs to get together and see what we can do. And I want to thank you all for for what y'all did, for running with it, and, you know, just hope we we did the right thing on this on this year, but, you know, I'm still not sure that we did. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny, we appreciate you being here. Moving on to number four, discuss and consider giving the county judge the authority to approve payments until the next Commissioners Court, and this is only the authority.
Don't move, Judge.
Yes. We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I want clarification, Judge.
Yes, it's only because we have the workday, and we this is our last meeting until January the tenth, that is a whole month before we have another meeting. And this clearly states until the next Commissioners Court meeting, yes.
And you talk about everything, is the bulk of it, or?
They will still present exceptions list, we're making them provide the reason behind that the payment needs to be made, that can't wait, and they have to show the documentation behind it, yes.
All right. And we're talking a limited number of expenses.
Yes.
We're not gonna overload anybody, that's a very, very small amount.
Yes. Although, there, you know, there will be payments that have to be made, so. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider approval of proposed projects and the total amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven to be funded by the RTA street improvement programs. And I think in the packet, Teresa has put some information behind there. You want to explain, Teresa?
Yes, Judge. So we have four years that we have to submit the projects that y'all are gonna fund with their RTA monies. It's twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. The proposed list is attached for each group. The county judge is in contingency, Commissioner Precinct one, two, three, and four. Those funds are locations to be determined for three and four, because I don't know what projects you're gonna use, but I did attach the the bus stops within your precinct, where you can work with Juan or Edward for to tie down the actual locations.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Teresa. So what you're saying is, we got the sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Yes, sir.
So we go to the list, and we we can select three or four bus stops we can work with.
Right, and Commissioner, you actually selected your locations, Bishop Community Center and Amistad Veterans Park for bus stop improvements.
Okay. If I have room for one more, can I do one more? I mean, I mean, I don't use all my funds, I'm saying?
Right. What I what I was confirming was the four years, it's like fifteen thousands per year, so that that's the total for within those two projects. If you have if you want to change, we would have to get an amendment with the RTA.
Okay, thanks.
Judge, if I can, I I would like to move that my RTA funds be allocated to the New Orleans County Coastal Parks Board to work on those projects that they have that would fit within those, and we'll bring that back to the court for approval, but I'd like to send that to the Coastal Parks Board to let them handle that, if that's a.
That's related to the RTA?
Yeah, it's for the RTA.
Applicable projects, correct?
So if you're gonna bring those projects back, do we need a vote on that, or are you just directing her to get with the?
Well, I just I'd like to go ahead and make it a.
Make the motion that you're gonna designate yours to that.
And that they're gonna bring it back.
I'll second your motion then for that.
And and because there's some transition now in City of Robstown, so we'll have to work with the new administration there in Robstown to designate, there may be a change in priority as far as location, so I'll get that to you as soon as possible, just as an amendment to this. But it'll be similar to Commissioner Gonzalez, like maybe two for the full amount.
Sure.
Rather than maybe four separate projects, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to direct the precinct four funds for.
For RTA applicable projects to the New Orleans County Coastal Parks Board for their selection and to bring back to the court for final approval.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And the rest of these have already been voted on, we don't need a motion for this? They've already allocated to certain funds, or do we need to vote?
Right, so this list will go directly to the RTA along with the and actually, the bus stops and all the information came from the RTA, but Juan put it together in maps so that you'll know exactly where the locations are. So it's really just selecting within the bus stops that are located within your precinct that the improvements should be.
Let me ask, because I may want to amend my motion a little bit, how how do we, like, who's approving whether these are good to good to go? It just says, if it's a bus stop, we know it's good to go, so.
Right, they have to be, yeah, they have to be improvements to the bus stop or the streets or the sidewalks.
Right, okay, so then can I, I'm gonna, if it's okay with everyone, I'm just gonna amend my motion, because it doesn't have to come back to us as long as it's RTA approved.
Right.
Right, so.
The expenses will be coded in the RTA fund, and then we'll submit for reimbursement.
Okay, so I'm gonna take back the bring it back to us, as long as it's an RTA approved project based on the the conditions, then I'll just let the Parks Board do it.
So he has an amendment to his motion, and I'll second that amendment then, move it forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That's everything on this, Teresa, for you for the RTA.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number six, discuss and consider placing a temporary hold on the ARPA manager position and related matters, and I think.
That's mine.
Yes.
I didn't make a motion, we put a hold on until we actually decide what we're gonna do with grant works.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number seven, receive an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, countywide allocated projects and other related matters. And I know you've done this a few times, I think he that this is Commissioner Gonzalez's as well, and he asked for specifically only the countywide, not the individuals.
Okay.
Yes.
And so currently, we don't, there are no remaining balances, everything has been allocated for countywide, other than the temporary hold for the position, which is a remaining balance of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
And that's for the ARPA position that you held previously?
That is correct. And.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, Judge.
Yeah.
I asked you for three rosters to show what we were doing with three projects, well, not project, but I I think that when I met with Teresa, we just we couldn't get some answers because we didn't know where some of the monies were, and you had to flip. So we asked for three things, I asked for three things, you're talking to Teresa, you're saying that we need to know a roster of those that have been unallocated.
Okay.
And a roster of those that that are, I think it was pending or completed. Something I was, I sent it, I sent you twice on that, and I had no response on it, so.
It was a last minute request.
You sent me this again, you know, and I've gotta go through every single page, but I just asked for those rosters, very, very simple rosters, right? You need to go through this and just give me those rosters, see what they what they where they stand, you know, because, you know, I mean, I have this, I already had this like five times, but I just want those rosters to show where we at on the funding, or what's pending on those fundings, so so I can ask Teresa of where we need to do, especially in my area, or in countywide projects, you know, if we're gonna have any leftover money. Because I know there's gonna be leftover money, you know, in in the way we look at this thing. So all we needed was the unallocated projects, the allocated projects that are still pending, and the only one was.
So Commissioner, I did talk to Lulu, and she was gonna work on that the weekend, but you were requesting all of the un- from countywide only, the projects that we unallocated funds to?
Right.
That total, and then where the funds went.
Put it somewhere else, yeah.
Because we don't have any funds that are not unallocated.
Right.
So you wanted to know what projects that we unallocated and where the funds were moved to.
Right.
And then you wanted to know the balance, I mean, all the projects that we have not started.
Right.
But they have been allocated, we just haven't started the projects.
We just haven't started.
Yes, so there is nothing not allocated.
And there's some that are complete, there are complete projects, but there's no balances. So that means every project that's complete, they use that money to the penny? I mean, there's no, I mean, there's no balances?
So anything that is was completed, and there was remaining balances, they got reallocated, and then it all went towards the other.
But it didn't show that.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't show that, that they're reallocated, so I just.
Everything went that was on that was left over, anything went to our two projects.
Correct.
The roof and the.
Yeah, but we need to show that, Judge. You might know it, I don't know it.
Yeah.
But we need to, because I'm I'm looking for money too, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm looking, but if if we're doing that, you need to provide us of the monies you allocated, then you unallocated, and where where did you allocate those monies to? So we know where those monies are going to, you know?
And that was that was just one boat with the leftover money, and there is at the bottom of the countywide projects, two items that list the total amounts for those two at the bottom of the group. One, do you have that printout, Lulu, available? And one, I think they're both like a little over four million, any money that was.
On page seven.
On page seven, I don't have that.
Page seven?
At the very bottom.
Got it, but it's the same one in the packet, right? No?
Yeah.
Oh, that, okay.
The, oh, well, what is this? This is not what I was talking.
This is not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That was a part of the monies that were unallocated and reallocated.
Okay, but the.
Okay, we want to go to a clear total at the very bottom of page seven, right here, the last two items on page seven.
I got it, I got it.
Yes, it shows four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-two cents was voted on seven twenty-six twenty-three.
Item three, A fifteen.
It shows right here the date it came to court and the item number. That date right there shows the date it came to court and we voted on it. And then the second one right there on the roof is the date we voted on it to allocate the money towards it. So it has come to court for a vote, yes.
Right, so anything that was unallocated went to those two projects.
Well, everything you're, everything you're unallocated goes going to those projects.
That is correct, and it was voted on those dates that are right next to those amounts.
Okay. I don't know what this is here, but I'll look at it.
Yeah, I'm not sure what this is either. Yeah, okay.
Let me, I don't know, maybe ask Dale a question, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
And how we, how we, how we, are y'all doing it, or who's doing it, tracking the expenses, do you want us to all know?
Yes, we we create projects for every activity that we have, and we submit the applications through the process that goes through our our review of our management, as well as our county attorney for for balances. We have a a project for each of the sign that that's been created, and once the funds get turned there, we move the budget to those those particular events, yes.
Grants has a role in it.
Yes.
The auditor has a role in it, and then the individual, whoever's project it is, everyone has to be, in fact, I talked about this in our Monday morning meetings, that if you have a project, it is your responsibility as well to stay involved and make sure those invoices and everything.
I stay involved in my projects.
Yeah, you do, absolutely, but there's a lot of departments that don't get that involved, but everybody has to be working together so that.
As far as the bank, who's who's, when the bank expenses, how do we know they match what we spending?
The bank account, we have one bank account for our funds, the bank accounts are reconciled every month.
Reconciled every month?
Every month.
So they match with?
Yes.
Do we get a copy of that, just?
We can get you a copy of that, yes.
Please, okay.
That'd be good.
Now, also, you mentioned ARPA, ARPA requires a review of the from the county attorney's wills.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, I really appreciate that you give me that. Now again, I don't know what that is. Okay.
If you would like, we can have a meeting, and we can sit down and go over it one by one.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we we do it plenty of times, but.
Okay.
All right, anything else that I have, I don't have any other questions, I just want to make sure we, that again, Dale knows what's going on on the other side, and we're monitoring the bank and everything else, so.
Okay. And also, those numbers have to be reported to Treasury, so auditor and myself are are in constant contact with them.
I don't have another questions.
Okay. And that was just an update, so there's no vote or motion?
No, that was just information.
Yes, thank you. And moving on to item number eight.
Well, yeah, well, I tell you what, I have one, now that you gave me. So this is what, what is what is this here, Lulu?
Oh, the, if those were the list that you wanted, that was a partial list of that of amounts that were unallocated, but then reallocated to the two on page seven, at the bottom of page seven.
My, one of my projects that I have.
This is only a partial list.
Yeah, that's a partial list.
The one I probably have, where we had the constables and the secretary or something, civil secretary or something, it wasn't break down into what we're giving who, can we?
I can break it down, and those are.
Can I do that? Because it only has a lump sum.
And the, okay, I'll break it down for you, because they're correspondent to your precinct or teacher funds.
Because I don't know if they've been used or not used.
They are currently used, there's two.
One that shows been used.
I combined those or the numbers. One of them is for one position for county attorney, and the other position is for precinct one for constable.
And there's another one. But, okay, so if we can just separate them, so I'll know who's getting what, and if, you know, we're not using one of them, I need to know why we're not using one of them.
Yes, Commissioner.
There'll be money left over.
Will do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, discuss and consider whether to adopt the resolution ratifying the Padre Bae deed restrictions signed by the previous county judge on October fifteenth, 2020, and I believe that's yours, um, county attorney.
This is an item that, uh, was actually never brought to court, and so, the court has the opportunity at this point to, um, choose whether to ratify that decision, and if you would like to take it into executive before taking that vote.
I just, yeah, I, I, I don't, yeah, I'd like to know where we are on all of that, I'm.
I thought we had, Jenny, didn't we?
I thought we did too, but I don't know, but, I mean, I would like to figure out the whole picture on this, cause I know there's a bunch of stuff going on with it, so if we could, Judge, I'd like to go into exec on that.
Executive.
Please.
And we're gonna be going into executive, I guess the next one as well? Item number nine.
Yeah, I just need to understand.
Nine, uh.
Same, so it's related.
Yeah.
Eight, nine.
Yes, Judge, sorry.
Okay. Then, moving on to, um, ten, discuss and consider the establishment of the Oasis County Health Unit pursuant to the Texas Health and Safety Code one-two-one dot zero-zero-four, a proven order and related matters. That, are we ready to proceed with that, Jenny?
I, I would like to go into exec on this one, too.
Okay.
I've got some legal questions on the whole.
I guess we need to go to executive.
Sorry.
Yes. Is there anything else anybody needs to bring into executive before we go there? Because it is already almost eleven twenty, eleven fifteen, seventeen, um, and we have to be back out here at one o'clock for the set time for.
No, uh. It looks like, Judge, it looks like everything else came along pretty quickly.
Okay, let's do item number twelve, discuss and consider the renewal of the Oasis County Workers' Compensation insurance coverage for the calendar year, um, twenty twenty-four and related matters.
It's a move.
We have a motion, I'll second that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider removing Commissioners Court from the ranking process for potential bidders on the Oasis County projects and/or services, including architects, engineers, the bid process and scoring. And I would like to, um, also add, we just got delivered another one to our offices, so I would want to include both of those in this motion, or any future ones, whatever you're doing. So, Commissioner Hernandez, I believe this was yours.
This is mine, uh, I just don't, I don't believe that we're qualified enough to do this, and, uh, there might be some conflict to this, if a commissioner has the best interest in one of, or the other company, I'm not saying they do, but just in case. Uh, so I'd like to go back to where the process was originally done, how it was originally done.
I, I can't remember how we got here, I'm sorry, someone's gonna have to update me on this.
You asked for that with the insurance thing, yes.
It was just on the insurance, I don't, it wasn't on anything else.
Well, yeah, apparently, I think he, Michael, you wanna fill us in on what we did here?
Cause we already changed.
There was, there was one other project that y'all did that, where you retained your selection authority, which was the medical examiner's construction, uh, project, and so. And so, I think what Commissioners asked.
Changed the engineer, cause we already changed the one back from the insurance, so this is just changing one more?
No, so the insurance one y'all tabled, that you wanted more time to examine and understand what that change was, and so that's why we're bringing it back today.
Commissioner Modas is the one that wanted more time.
On the employee benefits, uh, consultant.
The one we.
We tabled it, it was Commissioner Modas, though, that had the concerns, you were the one, yes.
So, what are we doing on?
We have two boxes of things in our offices to score. Either we are going to move forward and score them, or we are going to send them back. One is the insurance, um, consultant, the other is the medical examiner's building job, um, construction thing.
Did I do the medical examiner one, too? I don't remember.
Back, back when, yes.
Do what?
Yes.
Back when, yes, you did, and just for clarification on the, cause this is a two-part motion, or I guess it could be done separately, but just on the one dealing with employee benefits management and consulting, we've been without a consultant, uh, since August?
Since.
October, September one, September twenty-nine, yeah.
End of September, and so, October one, the beginning of fiscal year, we've been operating without one. We have the insurance committee, and we've been working with Mr. Salee, we've had Boone Chapman come in to provide us updates, uh, but we've been doing this temporarily. We, as the court, originally agreed to not continue the services for, uh, our previous consultant, and to put it out in, on the street, uh, that it hadn't been put out in the street for maybe close to twenty years.
Right.
So, our whole intent, in our original discussion, uh, here in court, was to have this resolved by the end of the year, so we could start January one, so because of this vote, this action, we kind of got put behind. So, um, I think we're still okay, but we do, at some point, need the consultant to help us be able to evaluate on daily basis, any stop-loss issues that come up, or any other items. Plus, if we wanna look at perhaps, um, opening up a new bid for insurance, uh, the sooner the better, and we can only do that with a consultant, so we need to move on that item pretty quickly, either just decide, yes, we as a court are going to evaluate it as a group, or to return it back to the, to the insurance committee. So, that, that's all I'm asking, because we are, we are facing a timeline now, and Michael can address that, or Mr. Salee can also address that as well.
If we return it to you today, would you be able to score it and go out like it?
Well, he doesn't score it.
So, the selection.
Your group, I'm sorry.
I would assist the selection committee, and coming up with the recommendation to bring back to court on January tenth.
Designate a selection committee, so we'd have to make a motion to, and I can't remember why.
Which is what, which is what's attached to your item.
Well, I know, I get that, so John, I, you're the one who tabled this one before, and I don't remember why. Are you satisfied with whatever you wanted to table it forward the last time, because I?
Or would you like to be a part of that selection committee on this one?
I'm just asking, I don't remember why you tabled it, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
It, it was, it was, well, there was a few issues, I mean, one was because I think the court had addressed kind of the want, the desire to figure this issue out, like Commissioner Hernandez is saying, is do we do this all as a court?
And I believe at that time.
Specialize it, so.
I believe at that time, we didn't, uh, we had just handed y'all the order document, and that was the very first time you saw it, was at the meeting, so you literally had no time to like consider it. And so, I think that's why we tabled it until now, uh, just to give you all some more time to process.
Can we make a motion to go back to selection committee?
Well, yeah, I mean, in other words, we don't even, we haven't gone away from that, we've just done it on two items.
We want these two to go back to the regular process.
All we have to do is just take away the motion for the other two, cause we only did it on two.
There's a motion, second, that we go back to the selection committee for the two items that we're talking about.
Okay, and then the selection committee you're recommending for this one is the human resource director, human resources designee, county auditor, and county auditor designee?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, so just, oh, no, two people, oh, four people?
Four.
So, four people from two departments, I mean?
Two, two from each, uh, it's the, it's the people who actually work with, uh, this particular, uh, project throughout the year, uh, so you have, uh, an individual in, in Mr. Salee's office, uh, that works with us as the employee benefits consultant, I mean, uh, representative to help the employees internally, and then we have Michelle Stewart, who works with Dale's office, who, uh, processes claims as well.
And, and why did you, I, I, going back in time, you took yourself off this committee?
I, I'm, I just, according to the law, I'm supposed to supervise all selection committees, I'm not supposed to be a voting member.
There you go.
And so, that was the change we made a, a year ago around this.
Okay, yeah, I second the motion to do whatever this order is in regards, whatever.
On these two items, go back to the regular procedure.
It's just, no, it's just to eliminate.
Selection committee.
Yeah, it's just to eliminate for these two, we never, we never.
Back to our regular thing.
Yeah, this is not gonna change our process.
Right, we never changed the process.
Our process is still the same, it's just in these two instances, the court chose not to delegate authority, and I think your motion would be to delegate authority for these two projects, and the two projects is the employee benefits management consulting services.
Commissioner Gonzalez said.
And the medical examiner's facility under CSP thirty-two fifty-one dash twenty-three.
We have a motion and a second to delegate the authority.
To delegate to the selection committee, cause this is not the original process. Originally, we had one or two members of the court on the selection committee, so this is going back to the most recent change.
Yeah, yeah.
I want that to clarify, because when you talk to me about going back to the original process, that was the original process that had been in existence for, gosh, who knows how long it here at the county.
Yeah, the original.
So, we're talking about just going to the most recent.
That's what I'm trying to say, you're spot on, no, you're.
You're not, you're not making any changes to the policy that the court approved a year ago, uh, in which the court decided there will be no members of the Commissioners Court on a selection committee?
Right.
That process remains intact.
Right, spot on, John, that's why I'm saying, all we're doing, we never changed the process, all we did was these two.
You're just not delegate, you're just now.
Hold on, Michael, we're, now, we are just undelegating, and we're yelling at it from us to someone else, so.
Do you need some help with that motion, or you got it down?
That was what Commissioner Gonzalez's motion was, but do we do, but do we do two of them? Do we need to do two of them right now?
Broken down separately.
Are they both posted, can we do them both today? Cause I don't think, I don't, is there an order for the second selection committee that you're talking about, or is it just this one?
Since it says.
I believe there is an order provided for both.
I just see one.
And the first part of the sentence, or was there not?
It's just for the one, I, I wasn't prepared for the second one.
Okay.
And I don't know that it's posted that way, so we, we.
Oh, cause it says, yes.
I think the first sentence is pretty general and could include both, uh, while, you know.
Discuss, but we don't, we never did.
It doesn't say all of the matters, so.
Okay, so.
But it does say generally.
Commissioner Gonzalez made a motion to basically go back to the selection committee for the two that we did not delegate, that was his, his motion, that was, I think, believed seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, correct, Commissioner Gonzalez? And that's all we're doing, is those two today.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Clarification, this is all for both.
For both, and she thinks we can do both.
I believe so.
Yes, there's enough leeway.
Okay, and, and to be clear, the items are this one and the medical examiner facility.
Construction.
Yes, under CSP thirty-two fifty-one dash twenty-three.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
One.
Wait, what happened?
This is not something I've ever supported.
Yeah, it was again, that's why he had the question before.
Should have a, a, a part in the process, not, not overwhelmingly, but I think that we've always should have a commissioner on there, and so, the fact that we delegate this to staff. Oh, I know, I know, I'm just saying, on philosophy alone, I've, I didn't support this a year ago, I'm not gonna support that again. I've always felt that we should have a representative of the court on there, not overpowering, you, you could balance it out as we have in the past, with three or four, five staff members, and only one or two representatives of the court, but at least to have some interaction, cause I agree, we're not specialists, but we should be specialized in some areas. We should, over time, have learned about some of these areas, and of course, defer to the specialists, and that's why they're still on there, but also have representatives of, on the court, uh, and, and just like before, you know, you get the packet, we all get a packet, and you can check, kind of check it out, and sign your, your non-disclosure, and get that information prior to court, and review it on your own beforehand. So, it's, that, that, there's always been a process, and we'll still have that process, and this passes, and I'm fine with that. But, like I said, philosophically, I, I don't agree with that, but.
But you're not, you're not disagreeing with taking, uh, us off of it and putting a selection committee, you're just more disagreeing with that issue from before?
I, I think, I think before, you know, it worked, we always had it balanced out before.
Not the vote here today, he's just clarifying why he was against, yes.
The court manager, I think, people like that that were on there, so it's still gonna be balanced out, I'm fine with that, so.
Uh, one, can I ask one other thing?
Yes.
Since we're gonna do a selection committee for the medical examiner project, we didn't have a selection committee defined yet for that one, but I would like to recommend, uh, that we use the county engineer and one designee from Public Works, and the medical examiner, and the director of operations for medical examiners. So, this, the members would be Juan P. Matel, Bert Perez, uh, Forrest, and Dr. Cannon.
I, I, I would disagree with that, I, I think anyone, I mean, i- if we have a problem collectively of us being on there, I'd have a problem with anyone having their direct employee serving on a committee. I, I don't mind with Juan being there, or a designee, or, but not both.
So, then, on this other order, that we told on, Michael, on this other order, you didn't bring that up, cause that's, it stuck in my, I mean, I, I didn't say anything, because I didn't, I didn't think it was, I thought it was kind of weird to have the county auditor and a representative, and the whoever, and someone else, so, I, I don't disagree with that, I mean, I don't disagree with that concept, so I, I, yeah, I don't.
I mean, the more staff that we can include, that, that's fine, but it just, look, spread it out. And if it means it's a smaller committee, I'm okay with that, I'm not saying Public Works shouldn't be a part of it, I'm just saying either one or designee, cause we know sometimes other commitments come up, so they'll always be represented, so it doesn't mean that you have to have five members of the board, maybe you only have three, right? It should always be an odd number, so having two from Public Works, you only have one, either the department head or designee.
I think that has, no, I think, I think that has merit, cause it really.
Same thing with, with auditor.
So, I would, I would, um, offer an, an alternative consideration for that, because, uh, Juan, while he's the director of Public Works, he's not the specialist in all the areas of Public Works, and so, he frequently requests me to have people from his office come in and participate in that process, and so, when we removed having, um, a commissioner on these committees, um, I'm left with very few people to make decisions, and I'd like to give the department head the opportunity to have a, a subject matter expert from his staff to participate.
But that's my point, that's why I voted against all of this, this is my, this is my problem, is we've taken away us having one representative on there to replace them with somebody who has a direct connection to it supervisor, not that.
No, 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 but let's just take.
Never been anything wrong with that.
I agree with that, the last part, no, no, I agree with that, I don't, I, I don't think you should have two people from the same department, I think that can be a problem, and, and I didn't say anything on the last one, cause I thought we were kind of blowing through that, and I probably should have, but.
HR.
I agree, but it could be Juan or his designee, and, um, uh, Dr. Cannon, and, or his designee.
So, if we put or, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, or, that, that's all I'm saying.
And then there probably needs to be a.
On the previous one as well.
A third, is there a third other that we can think of that would be a good cover, coverage for that, that would? But if not, then two of them can evaluate it, I guess.
I mean, all, all your construction experts reside in Public Works, so I don't know where else I'm supposed to go, to get people to help us make that decision.
All right, well, we'll just go with those, I mean, I, I'm okay if we just go with those two and let them rank them, and you can supervise it?
And then, and then, and again, just to remind the court, it's, it's a recommendation, the committee will, uh, score them out the way they see, they'll present that to the court, the court still has all your decision-making ability, which is to, uh, go with the recommendation, or go other than the recommendation, or reject all bids. You, you still have the final say on where all of these projects go.
Who's the construction lawyer expert in your office, Jenny, we, could we put someone on from your office, maybe?
Not to be a voting, we'll always advise, but not to be a voting.
Okay, okay, fair, okay.
Do, do we need a motion on this to select your committee, is that what you're waiting on, Michael?
Yes.
Yes, do you want to raise that motion, Commissioner Modas, or?
Well, motion on the floor, right?
Oh, there was discussion.
The only motion that we.
I'll make it, Judge.
Well, the only motion that was, that we're still waiting to vote on, I think, was to.
Is the selection committee for the second.
You already approved the, that we're gonna have one.
Yes.
Need to decide who the members are gonna be.
So, I, I think Commissioner Hernandez is willing to make that with the words or, on either one of those two, with saying the word.
Department head or.
Or, Public Works, or the person, and.
Designee.
Yes.
So, it'd just be those two at this point, okay?
I'll second that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and item number fourteen, uh, discuss and consider approval of the proposed twenty twenty-four Commissioners Court schedule. It's in your packets, it has dates for, um, throughout the year, all of the dates that we're required to have on there. I know it's quite a bit, you probably had a chance to look at it or didn't, but, um, if there are no changes or no suggestions to that, then I think it is eleven thirty-three, and I would like to move to go into executive, cause we have added three or four more items to it, it might be a little lengthy, um.
I mean, I don't have a, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have a lot of questions on that one, Judge, so whatever you.
On which one?
On the, going as far as the lengthy ones, um, so, I mean, if you've got a couple more you wanna try to do out of that Public Works, or whatever, we can probably jet through them.
Grants.
Grants, we have, Anna, you wanna come up to the podium, so we can get through grants, maybe very quickly? Under B one, discuss and consider an inter-local cooperative contract with a no cash match between Brooks County and Oasis County, related to a planning and needs assessment through the Community Development Block Grant. Um, has this been reviewed by the county attorney?
It has been reviewed and, uh, approved by the county attorney. And, and everything has been going back and forth as to if any changes they wanted, it was made.
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion? The only other thing that I would like to say on this with all grants, and I've been saying this, you're probably gonna hear me say this repeatedly, if you come to us, you have a grant, you want to go after, you, um, get approval to proceed with a grant, you need to stay involved with the Grants Department while your grant is being processed, you need to, um, stay up to date and help them to help you. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider approval of ratification of a grant application submitted to the Texas Veterans Commission Fund for a hundred and fifty thousand with a no cash match.
Love those words.
Yes, I, we, we highlight it, we have a motion.
Motion and second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Same sign, the motion passes. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of ratification of grant application.
So moved.
Second.
No cash match. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Public Works, discuss and consider acceptance of Rabbit Run Drive and Coyote Trail into the Oasis County roadway inventory for maintenance. We are accepting that now because you're approving this.
Yes, Judge. Poller Works is recommending the acceptance of Rabbit Run Drive and Coyote Trail into the Oasis County roadway inventory for maintenance. We're recommending.
Judge, I'd make a motion. I just wanted to say something about it as well, but motion to accept.
I'll second it.
Judge, I just want to thank, um, Public Works, uh, on this. They really did a good job. We worked on this for, I don't know, a couple of years. It seems like, seems like a decade. And I want to thank the folks with Rabbit Run and Coyote Trail as well, because they really worked hard. We wouldn't have been able to get this done. They had to raise the money to make significant improvements to these roads prior to us accepting them. But, um, th- this wouldn't have been done without the, the neighbors and Juan, and we really, we really, you know, really worked hard to get this done for those folks. It was the right thing to do. And, and, um, so, but thank you very much to all involved in this process.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Um, item number two, discuss and consider the approval of certificate of substantial completion for the IFB 3231 Hazel Basemore Splash Pad Project.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, Public Works is approving the certificate or recommending approval of the certificate of, uh, substantial completion for the Hazel Basemore Project.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is this just the splash pad or the bathrooms and everything out there completed too?
This one's just the splash pad right now, Judge. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of certificate of substantial completion for the Oasis County Courthouse ADA Improvement Projects.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, Poller Works is recommending approval of the certificate of substantial completion, uh, for the courthouse AD project. Uh, they're substantially complete. We're recommending.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion for a discussion. Um, I know it says substantially complete. I know there's an issue outside in the parking. Does that have anything to do with this?
No, ma'am.
Yes. There's also, and you are going to finish with the painting and things like that?
That's, that's correct, Judge. Were there some?
That's in our offices where they took down the signs. There's still, yes.
There's, there's some minor items that, that is part of the substantial completion that it's in here, uh, but it's, it's part of the punchless items.
All the doors or everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay. But we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, discuss and consider authorizing and approving an execution of an agreement with Doggett Heavy Machinery Services. And, um, this is purchase of a Dyno Pack Pad Foot Roller, but this is through your budget, your money.
Yes, ma'am. We're recommending approval.
Yes. We have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number five, discuss and consider authorizing and approving an execution of a con- construction agreement with South Texas Building Partners under Goodbye Cooperative Contract Number 23 for the Johnny, the Calderon Constable Precinct Five Office Renovations. And I believe those are funded by Commissioner Modas and my funds, too.
That is correct, Judge.
And so there's a funding source that has been approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number six, discuss and consider approval of a supplemental agreement for $206,704 between Oasis County and Raptor Engineering for the Johnson Controls Energy Savings Performance Contract, third party. And I understand this is part of the follow-up with the energy savings. They're the ones that are going to evaluate and show the savings that we will receive. Am I correct?
That is correct. That is correct, Judge. They provide as a report, uh, quarterly report, uh, uh, for, for the next three years, and this is part of the, I mean, it's part of the M and B.
Are they doing it now, one, or they're going to start doing it?
No, they, they've been doing it, Commissioner. It's just the next, this is for the next three years of the phase one.
I know we pay them a lot of money, uh, but this is, this is balance off. I mean, we, we do a savings. I don't know how much the savings is.
Yes, sir.
And we're paying these guys 200, 206,000.
Yes, sir.
So, is that part of the savings that we lose?
Uh, it's part of the requirements, uh, um, when, when the contract was.
With the grant, when the contract was.
When the contract was approved with, uh, JCI, uh, there was a requirement that we'd have to have a third-party reviewer. So this is part of that requirement.
So can we have, can you use a report on, on all the savings we've gotten? The savings, is there a way we can find out what savings have we gotten, how much we paid out?
Yes, sir. We can, we can, uh, uh, request a presentation from JCI and Raptor.
And this is to evaluate what we, since the job is complete now, right, the savings we will receive. This, are they going back to some of the projects to, do we have a savings already?
There, there's a, there's been savings, Judge. I think in the past year, there's, there has been an overrun.
Uh-huh.
And there is like 39,000 that JCI, um, has to pay back to the county. So there is some, so there is some money there.
But, but this is just the beginning of what could be substantial savings for us.
Yes, ma'am.
But they will evaluate and keep us informed.
Is this the same original project or process that was created probably like 10 years ago or more?
That is cor- that is cor- that is correct, Commissioner. This is a, I think this is their 10th year, and we got three more years under the first contract.
Under the first one, okay.
Yes, sir.
Because that was always a big thing. Um, because before it came to Commissioners' Court was something that CCISD was looking at when I served there. And, I mean, that, that's what they were looking at, was the county. That was the model with JCI, was to be able to have that, capture that cost savings and, and see. So, but you're saying this is the first year we're seeing the amount or?
This is the, well, there's, there's been.
Under this term.
Under, under the, um, the past 10 years, uh, the past year, there was a, an overrun. So there's some monies that, that have been out, that they owed to the county that, that he made the match.
I'll make the motion to pass. I don't think we have a motion yet, do we? Did we have a motion? Yeah. I'll make the motion.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
The motion passes. Thank you. Um, on D, purchasing D1, discuss and consider authorizing approving method of procurement, uh, request for proposals for public health services.
Judge, I don't know if this might be related to the items y'all are going to have in, in executive discussion.
Yeah, so we probably need to hold off, come back to these two.
Yeah, agreed. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you. I'm on the roll, so.
All right, I'm good.
Um, the auditor, let's get that done. Um, approve budget number one, approve budget change order number one for fiscal year 2023-24.
I think, Your Honor, we have a budget change order number one, our first, uh, change order for, for this fiscal year. Uh, there's, uh, there's only two large items on there for 1285, which is the appraisal district. When we, uh, did our budget for it, uh, the appraisal district came up with a, with a modified, uh, change, so we had to, we had to basically increase the value for this with the funds are, are available in contingency. Uh, that's where we know at the jails, they sell a, a significant amount of vacancies there, here. So they're, they're still trying to contract, contract with a personal agency to, to handle the services for that. So they're trying to move money from the regular salaries that they have that are vacancies to cover the, the, uh, company they're using to do this. And the last thing is for, on page two, is West Law, that we, when we did our budget change orders and budget cuts, we totally took away their entire West Law, uh, which was over $50,000, but they still needed a small amount for this. A small amount is $10,000, so they have the funds available for this. Uh, these change orders have been reviewed by my staff, and these funds are available for these, this particular adjustments. And I submit the budget change order one for your approval.
We have a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number E2, approve the capital budget change order number 128.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a budget changer for our project chapel, uh, number 128. Most of these are, are modifications and movement around, as you mentioned on, on page one. Uh, for our, our 2016 COs, we're moving significant money around from your, uh, funds as well as Commissioner Modas' funds to cover the, the constable renovations of 310. We are closing some funds that we know that are, that have been, been finished and, and processing those funds available. And you'll see that in the, the follow-ons for the 2019, as well the, the ABM signs. The, these have been completed in funds, uh, and we're just moving into where the funds are needed in those particular items. Uh, we've gone over this, these changes with, with Teresa and her staff, and we, 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 these meet our requirements and submit, uh, change order 120, 128 for your acceptance.
Okay, I gotta, we should.
ABM is not completed. This is only what we approved completed. We are still, have one last walkthrough on the last completion thing, yes. But everything so far has been approved by Public Works.
These are just projects that we're already done and completed, yes.
The certification and what he said is that whether funds are not left over or funds are not used, who has, how do, where, where do we put those funds?
Depends on the, depends on the project, to, the project was assigned for your particular, uh, uh, area, Commissioner. He, uh, once the, the project is completed, we'll work with you and, and your staff, and then we'll move your, your funds back to your unallocated side. If they're county-wide, they move back to a county, county fund. So we make sure they go to the proper, proper area.
It won't go to another bucket. They'll go back to.
It could, if you, if you, because we're, uh, Teresa works with you, with y'all very, very well on saying, you, you have this particular project coming up, and we have these funds available, we, we should reallocate the funds, and we can. And we usually do.
Okay. All right.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Um, I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Um, item number three, authorize the county auditor to process a social services list of requested payments as a one-time exception to be included in the vendor payment exceptions check run on Friday, December 15. And I understand your office has vetted and approved.
As we, we, as we, we brought up the, the, uh, uh, Judge Scott, you and I have made projects with, with, with social services and saying they have to follow certain requirements, certain restrictions to be able to have the funds. They submit information to your office and my office for review. We've reviewed every transaction to make sure every information that was required is there. Every, every, any supporting documentation is, is there. So at this time, we're, we're now processing and about ready to start our internal audit for this division, and we'll make, you know, uh, adjustments as needed. But these were vetted by my office and your office, and these are for rent and burial, for the, for these time period that we have. And they meet the requirements we, we have set.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. So now we are actually ready to go to executive. Everything else has to be done afterwards, right? Did I miss anything? Okay, so, um, executive session. Public notice is given that Commissioners' Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provision of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event the Commissioners' Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087. Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with the attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such action as is appropriate on items discussed in that executive session. Item A today is consult with the county attorney and outside counsel in regard to the Corpus Christi Polymers Tax Abatement Agreement. Discuss and consider taking action on the same during the regular meeting and all related matters, Texas Government Code 551.071. Consult, item B, consult with the county attorney on cause number 219 CV43, Diana Bond, estate of Tammy Bond and next friend for ARB minor child versus Oasis County and the Southern District of Texas Corpus Christi, Texas Government Code 551.071. Discuss, consider, and take action on approving a settlement, authorizing county judge to execute related settlement documents and related matters. Item C, consult with the county attorney on legal matters related to cause number 223 CV319, Britt versus Oasis County, et al., in the U.S. Southern District of Texas Corpus Christi and related matters. Discuss, 551.071, excuse me. Discuss, consider, and take action on the same, including potential hiring of outside counsel and related matters. Item D, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding the Padre Bay Park cease and desist letter and all related matters, 551.071. Discuss and consider taking action on same in open session. Item E, consult with the county attorney in regard to the execution of a release waiver and settlement agreement with Hagerty Consulting, and authorize the county judge to sign an early release check for final payments. Discuss, consider taking action in open session, 551.071. We have added 3A8. Let me see, go back. Eight, nine, and 10. 3A8 is discuss and consider whether to adopt the resolution ratifying the Padre Bay Park deed restriction signed by the previous county judge. I believe that would be the 551.071 as well?
Yes, all of those, Judge.
Uh-huh, okay. Um, just nine, discuss and consider directing the county attorney to draft and file instrument to correct the chain of title related to Padre Bay deed restriction signed by the previous judge on October 15, 2020, and all related matters, 551.071. And then, um, item number 10 is discuss and consider the establishment of the Oasis County Health Unit pursuant to the Texas Health and Safety Code 121.004, and approve an order and related matters. And Government Code 551.071 on that as well. It is 11.
Also the purchasing items, Judge.
What purchasing items?
One and two.
3D1 and 3D2.
3D1 and 3D2.
Hold on. Not today.
I thought we were just waiting to vote on those till after we came out, because we wanted, are we adding those to executive as well?
Judge, on the update for ARPA, if the court could pull that update into executive, there are some items, uh, that we would like to update the court on.
Um, yes, let's do 3D1 and 2 as well. I thought we were bringing those back after executive, because we wanted to vote on what we were dealing with in executive, and then we would handle, are we needing to pull those into executive as well?
One and two, just if you have the questions. This is different from ARPA. Uh, on one and two and purchasing, if the court's going to have questions in executive, then.
We'll pull it in there anyway, just to see. 3D1, discuss and consider authorizing approving method of procurement for public health services, authorizing purchase agent to.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. To adopt an order delegating authority, and that's 551.071. All of these are still?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, there, there's four or five of them that are related.
Yeah, everything is over and repetitive, yes.
Right, but you just have to pull them to, to pull them, so.
Yeah, so 3D2, discuss and consider the, um, approving a method of procurement for lease of office space at Calder- at the Calderon Building for primary care services, and that would be Texas Government Code 551.071 as well. And then you want to bring in the ARPA. What number is that?
3A7, Judge.
3A7, receive an update on American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA countywide allocated projects. We have already voted on that, but I guess it doesn't, or we didn't have a vote. There was nothing. It was an update, so.
And Judge, as a better part of valor, since there's more that got pulled in after we went on, should we call the applicants and tell them to come at 1:30, just to be courteous to them?
Yeah, 1:30 or 2, it might be a while. We need, we'll get staff to do that when we go around. Or if you are watching any of the applicants, um, this is going to, we're going to be there till at least 1:30. It will not be before then, yes.
Okay, so.
Quite possibly, too.
Can someone be designated to make sure and call all the port applicants and tell them one, not to be here till 1:30 at least?
They'll take care of it in the office, yeah. Um, so it is, we are, we, and the, I did the ARPA in there, right? I already did that. Okay, it is 11:55 and we are going to a massive executive session. Okay, it is 1:55 and we are coming back from executive session. I apologize, all of you who got the notice, because we had thought we would be in here at 1:00 and then we thought we'd be here at 1:30. So instead of finishing the rest of our agenda, I'm going to move straight into the Port Commission appointments on I-9. Before I begin, um, I'd like to state that we had some amazing candidates, amazing people apply. But we have changed our policy in the last year, October the 11th and November the 15th. We voted two different times on trying out a new policy moving forward. And we have gone over that and tried it, you know, with something new. I'm not saying it's going to be perfect. We may have some hiccups, but we're going to try it that way. Um, basically, what we have gotten to through these meetings is everyone who applied, who wishes to do so, can go up to the podium and will be allowed three minutes to state their case on why you would like to, or why you think you would be a good port commissioner. Anyone from this side, the court may ask you a question or two. We'd like to keep this short to three minutes because we have so many applicants. And we would also like to finish up the rest of our business today. It's been kind of a long court since we only have one for December. We still have some items to address. Once everyone is done presenting and any questions are answered, each member of the court, and Peyton will come up here to the front with this whiteboard. We will go down the row here. Each member of the court will select one applicant from the 12 people who applied for this position. Your, a commissioner has to put your name, so that will go from 12 people to five people. So we're a process of elimination. After that, on the first round, round one of that, each member will get two votes. You cannot vote for the same person, but you have to vote for two different people on that. It doesn't matter. You don't have to vote for your person you put on the board. We assume you probably would. But you don't have to. You can vote for two totally different people, but you must vote for two separate people out of the five that are on this board. The first two members to get to fi, three votes, quorum of our court, are our two next commissioners. So that is, did I state everything correctly? Anybody have any clarifications, any questions?
I don't know if it's correct, not just, but it says here on number four, in the last minutes we had, the meeting that, uh, in round one, and I'm, I'm assuming round one is when we first started.
It is.
You have two votes.
Yes.
You have two votes, so I can nominate two people.
No, you can nominate one. Every commissioner gets one person on the board, but you can vote for two names that are already on that board. You cannot vote for the same person twice.
Because, yeah, my name's already on one of those persons.
Yes.
Okay, this is kind of misleading here because it says, I'm entitled to votes, do not, the court has two votes and must cast their votes for two different people.
Yes.
So if I say I want so and A and B, and that's two people, but as you're saying now, I have to wait for round two to, uh.
No, no, no. I, you will go down the row. We did this with letters. We did it with Disney characters, things like that to try to make it, but, um.
Okay, well.
Each of us will put A, B, C, D, and E. Let's do the letters. And Commissioner Hernandez is first. He can pick A and D. You can pick C and E. It's like, but you cannot pick C twice. You can't pick D twice. You have to pick two separate.
So right now, we say, we're saying we're going to pick two right now.
Right now, we're going to let them talk and then we will ask questions.
But you only get to nominate, every member gets to nominate one, so we, five people will be on the board once.
It should be 10 people on the board.
No, it's five. We all put one forward and then there's two votes for, because you're going to vote for your person. Someone's going to vote for their person. So the two votes is to get to the next person. You're going to have to vote for a second person, but every, but five people end up on the board. That's how it's done.
The thing is with that, if you don't vote for that second person in the first round, you're not, everyone get to vote for the second person.
You only get to nominate one person to put on the board, and then you get two votes of the five that get put on the board. I mean, that's, I don't know how to.
I don't know. To me, it's so simple, just to put the names up there, we select one. For the first vacancy, select somebody for the second vacancy. To me, that was simple.
And I pulled it up in the court's, Commissioner, I did pull it up and I watched the video and it was, it did state that everybody gets one, one nominee and you get two votes.
Then this is wrong?
Yeah. That, that notes in there, not very clear, but they were really just notes for me to explain to the audience how our process was going to be, so. Um, and I am going to go in alphabetical order because I see we have a lot of people here. If you're not here, if you don't wish to speak, you do not have to come up to the podium and speak. But Mr. Altide, you are up first.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of you for taking the time to meet with me about this appointment. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from anybody here? I know we had a question come up this morning about the conflict of two foreign trade zones. Would you see that being a conflict for you? If you have a foreign trade zone and then you serve on another foreign trade zone, is that a conflict or not?
I don't have a foreign trade zone. And the foundation does not have a foreign trade zone.
Thank you for clarifying. That was brought up this morning.
A foreign trade zone. I do not. The foundation does not.
Thank you for clearing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Berry.
Thank you for allowing us here today. It's going to be hard to be shorter than that speech, so.
Try, very hard.
So don't expect it. I, I served on the Port Commission for nine years. I bring a little different perspective here than most of the other applicants. I think our communities lost the faith and the trust in the current port. Some years ago, Bobby Gonzalez and I led an initiative to extend La Quinta Ship Channel. And back before 2014, the port was not rich. It didn't have a lot of money. And our money had to be parsed out and spent in, in just a very unique manner. We were just not rich. Bobby and I voted to, along with the rest of the commission, after much thought, to extend La Quinta Channel from Reynolds Metals to the, almost the city limits of Portland, Texas. That extension, when you look over in San Patricio County, brought us Cheniere, Arcelor Metal, Exxon's ethylene plant. That one extension brought about $50 billion to our community. If you look through the community since those plants were built, you look in San Patricio County, you see new subdivisions, you see new businesses, you see new houses. That's the things you see physically, but what's really brought to our community, it's brought good paying jobs. It's brought families' income, permanent income, where they can send their kids to school. They can do more things. They're less poor. We have a much better life here because of that business expansion. In the last eight years, there's been about eight major companies, worldwide companies, come to see the Port of Corpus to locate here. Of those eight companies that approached the Port of Corpus, zero of them came here. For whatever reason, the port couldn't land them on the property that it has. The port has $304 million today in its piggy bank. They're sitting on $304 million cash. They're doing nothing with it. They're not trying to help our county. They're not trying to help our community with it. This coming year, they're going to add another $71 million to their savings account. And they're just going to sit on it. That money needs to be reinvested in our community. It needs to help us. The port has a thing to do. It needs to be a port. It needs to keep the channel open, but it also has a duty to our community. The, the port in and of itself was started in 1926 by the citizens of Nuasis County. They raised taxes to start the port. And when they did that, they didn't think the port was ever going to wake up one day and sue the people of Port Aransas, take their marina away, and then demand subjugation to the port's rules or otherwise be sued in submission. That needs to change. I hope y'all make a fine selection today. Good luck. Have a good day. I'll take any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Berry?
Mr. Berry, how, how long have you been on the port?
I served nine years.
Nine years in the port?
Yes.
And that's when y'all did that expansion?
Yes. We voted, we voted at that time, and it was hard fault within the, in the commission itself. But we voted at that time. The port had to spend its own money to do the engineering, the groundwork, the test piling, all the preliminary work, because at that time, the federal government wasn't here to help us. We had to, we had to convince the federal government, the local community wanted this project bad enough. We had to put money in it, but when we put money in it, the highest paid person at the port was a couple hundred thousand dollars. Today at the port, you've got five executives and each one of them make more than $400,000 a year plus bonuses. In our community, that's, that's just crazy. That's, that's, that's a lot of money. And, and so, again, I, I was at a time before the Permian Basin, before all the oil started flowing, before the mega ships were here. We, we ran on a tight budget. We had a tight budget. And that particular project was probably the best thing we did in the nine years I was there at the port.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
Scott Frazier.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today a little bit. Why would I want to do this or why and what's my agenda? I think our port needs to explore some diversity, some different opportunities, other products we could possibly bring in and out of our port. I think we need to look at that, see what's good for our region, act upon that. I think we need to improve and increase our transportation opportunities, be it rail, be it trucking, however that is, be, you know, the ships even, barges, whatever that is, maybe containers, I'm not totally sure. But we need more opportunities, more transportation opportunities in this area. I was asked to consider serving by my colleagues in the agriculture industry. Ag committees are, ag commodities are shipped all over the world, so transportation systems are super important to us. So a port like this is vital for us. Much of our grain sorghum goes in and out of the Port of Corpus Christi. Our cotton used to go in and out of the Port of Corpus. It doesn't anymore. And we could help our infrastructure by bringing that back. Ag is about a four to five billion dollar industry in the coastal bin. And our, and then it accounts for about 120,000 jobs, I'm told. And that's a multiplier effect in our communities of about $10 billion. So agriculture's a big deal. But I don't want you to think I'm much up here as a, you know, with blinders on, a one-trick pony. I think my knowledge, experience I've gained over the last few years, I can look into other opportunities or other industries, not an expert necessarily, but I think I have had the opportunity to work on virtually every level out there, from a little local, you know, church or school committee all the way to, you know, work on trade issues at the NAFTA hearings, so, and just about everything in between. So I think I bring the knowledge and experience to setting in that role. I couldn't have said that 20 years ago. I think I can now. And I do think we need some diversity and consider some diverse for our port. If we listen to some of the movers, shakers the last few days, they want to get away from, you know, oil and gas and hydrocarbons and all this, and those are, you know, become bad, so to speak. I don't think we'll ever get away from them personally, but I think looking at other opportunities would be good for us. So that's why I was asked to serve. I'll ask her any questions.
Any questions?
So what are your thoughts on, I mean, should there be specialized positions on the port that represent different industries, one for ag, one for, say, refinery industries or others? Or do you think that this process is fair enough to, the last time we, we had an ag representative who was dedicated and came from ag, it's been well over 15 years or so.
It's been a pretty good while. David Mayo served for a number of years and then Mr. Gandy served for a few years. I don't know that we need to specifically have, quote, "seats" for certain industries, but, but I do think you guys or, you know, whoever's doing the appointments, the city, the county, Sampat County, whoever needs to take into account the different industries in our area and try to have a diverse set of people on the Port Commission, I think would be wise, so that we have, you know, voices from everybody a little bit.
Good point.
All right. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Jaime Garcia.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I don't want to go over my resume or anything like that. Everybody has it. Just want to highlight a couple of things that I think are important to say. I'm a Texas A&amp;I graduate in chemical engineering. I worked in the chemical industry for 11 years. Did everything from engineering to plant managing. Got promoted to divisional management team, where we actually run or was in charge of multiple terminals throughout the world, you know, in Hamilton, Canada, Mexico, got to open one up with a customer in Japan. So a lot of experience there. I got to serve in the port industries. John LaRue was the port director. Candace was the port commissioner at the time. Got to work with all the plant managers on critical issues that affect our community and our industry. I think I can bring that knowledge to the table. I do have ag experience. I do own some companies that actually sell internationally seed throughout the world. So, but more importantly, what I want to bring to the table is ethics, integrity, unity. I want to work with the county, the city, and how do we work together as partners and look at our synergies? Help each other out instead of suing each other, hurting each other. There's a lot of opportunity for our community if we all work together. And I think I am the person that will go the extra mile to go talk to each commissioner, go to Sampat, talk to them, talk to the city council, and talk to all the port industry members and see how we can work together. That's what I'd like to bring to the table. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Gully, he is our current port commissioner.
Thank you. I feel kind of weird, kind of tooting my own horn, but I guess this is the time I have to toot my own horn. I, I appreciate the fact that I was appointed four years ago by this board unanimously to serve a final term, a year, a part of a final yearly term. And I was reappointed a year later for the three-year term, which I've served. From the time I got on, appointed, my, my plan was to be the very best commissioner I could possibly be. My life kind of has always been around the maritime industry. I, I was a marine biology major originally. I did some graduate work in ocean ecology, population biology, and oceanography, and then quit doing that and became a commercial driver. Went back school, became a surgeon. All the time I was running boats. I've probably run boats out of that channel 1,000 times. I've had a 100-ton captain's license, except for 20, since 1973. So I've been on, under, and around that water all my life. And I've built docks. I've bulk headed almost all of Packery Channel on the residential side. I've built marinas. I've had vessel movements. I've, I've run four boats out of Port Aransas, big boats out of Port Aransas, and scheduled those up to 150 miles offshore for 41 years now. I do a little bit of everything. I dredge. I've got 114-foot dredge working in Cal Allen. I built a plant that we make sand gravel and frac sand. So I know how to build levees and I know do, I know how to do just about everything. I transload material, almost everything that the port does. And that experience helped me hit the ground running when I became a port commissioner. And then while I was there, I, I tried to do everything I could, they, they wanted me to do. I ended up, and currently the, the port is run by three-member committees. There's really four of them. There's, there's facilities, which I serve on as chair. There is security, which I'm, I serve on, and I'm the longest-serving member of that committee. I served on audit just one year, the first year. I don't like to keep tracking the expenses because everybody complains about the expenses and what we spend the money on, so I don't have anything to do with that. But what I do is I chair the long-range planning committee. And I'm the first person that's, that's a representative from Nuasis County that has ever been on there, much less be the chair. And I've been the chair. I've been on it three years, been the chair the last two years. That's where all the big stuff happens. We don't spend the money, but we, we plan ahead. We build the docks. We, we speak with the industries that come in and we, we try to find the, the diversity that Mr. Frazier talked about. By the way, I've, I've, I look around here and I, I know a lot of these people. I buy seed from Jaime. I buy seed from Jaime, he's a friend of mine, for a ranch. I just got put on the, the agricultural committee that was formed last month at the request of Mr. Frazier as one of the members, because I'm the only, the only commissioner that farms and ranches also in Nuasis County. So I've got a broad range, I have absolutely no conflicts with the Port of Corpus Christi, I've never had a conflict with the Port of Corpus Christi. I've never had a contract of any kind of any business I've been associated, because I've heard this rumor kind of spread around here, and I want to put that to rest. I don't have any property, businesses, or anything. I've built a two-mile-long barge fleet, I designed it, I permitted it, I built it, and I sold my interest out of that about two years before I put my name in the hat originally. So I want to put those, those rumors to rest. I work very hard, because I'm, I'm retired now, and I knew that was coming, that's why I took this job on. It takes almost a full time if you're going to do it right. I serve on, like I said, three of those committees that run the port, and I chair half of them. We have, I think, eight committee appointments.
Kind of wrap it up for questions, your time has already run out for a while, sorry. That's okay.
I've, I've been there a long time.
I know, you could probably talk forever about it, yes, totally agree. Do we have any questions from any, any commissioners? Sorry to interrupt, then, okay. Yes, go ahead.
So, what would you say is the biggest challenge still facing the port?
Well, the biggest challenge, not just facing the port, but the whole region, is, is water. And we've had three real important meetings in the last month, we're having those meetings through my long-range planning committee, the next one coming up is the eighteenth, and we are getting closer and closer, we're working with the city of Corpus Christi primarily, but also I've invited industry to this next meeting, because I think it's important that they're, have a seat at the table, I invited the county to be there, the Nuasis River Authority is going to be there, and a lot of stakeholders, it'll be this Monday. I'm working very close with Drew Molly, who's the new water guy, he's very easy to work with, great guy, we talk all the time, and we're getting very, very close to what I think's a breakthrough, to be able to work with the city so they, they can get water this region. That's the biggest problem in the whole, whole thing. We just finished, are about to finish widening and deepening the channel, which will make us the widest, deepest channel in the entire Gulf of Mexico. And we'll start on the Quinta Channel next, we've already started that process through my committee as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Lamantilla.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for meeting with me. You spent some time with me, and I appreciate it, I'm humbled by any support I may get from y'all. I have a long history of serving on, in the community, some, some are very helpful here, and some helpful in maybe more subtle ways. So I've served on charitable organizations, I've served on business organizations, you all appointed me the Christus Pond Hospital Board. I think the only person who's ever become chairman of the board that was appointed by the county. But that was because of collaboration, that was collaboration with everyone on the board. I think I'd be, do just as well with the port commission, this very important seat. I run a company that's quite large, many hundreds of employees, very complex, a logistics company, by the way, with some very complicated logistics, with thousands of containers coming from overseas, unfortunately not to this port, but we're very, I'm very comfortable in that, very comfortable in the financial world. I'm educated there, and I've spent a great deal of time in our company doing that. We have a pretty diverse organization with many different, many different facets of it. So I think all of those things will help me serve to get the port where it needs to be for the future. And take any questions.
So are you, on the financial side businessman, is that the same? Is that the same terminology?
Well, it's, the input may not be, but the numbers are numbers, right? There's a certain level of, of financial, there's certain financial standards that you have that you have to be literate in, in order to run any company. Now, there's background on how you get there and the different variables that go into it, but yeah, I'm very comfortable there. And that's, you know, I think of myself more as a people person, but the financial side is something you have to have. You have to have that to run a big organization like this. You're running, you know, billions of dollars, somebody has to watch after it. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane LaRue.
Good afternoon, my name is Diane LaRue. If I'm given the opportunity to become a port commissioner, my priority would be to work at strengthening the communication between the appointing authorities, the port, and its industry stakeholders, our various community leaders, and the public. It wasn't that long ago that the port worked with Nuasis, and Sampat Counties, and the city on regional projects like Homeport, the Mary Rhodes Pipeline, and the Joe Fulton Corridor, just to name a few. My time will be committed to help guide the port in the vital role Polka Plays has in supporting, in supporting the jobs and the economy of the coastal bend. I keep up with the commission meetings, I study the agendas, I may be a nerd, it's my thing, budgets, contracts, and future projects, and have done so for many years. It is very important to be well-informed and not be afraid to question expenses and projects, and to make informed suggestions for improvement. I don't see the commission as micromanagers of the port, but I do expect fiscal oversight as its governing body, not just as in the advisory role it has played in recent years. I personally would like to see more money invested in our local community, instead of spending lavishly on travel, dinners, and parties in and out of town. The port in recent years has become a large supporter of the Junior Livestock Show, a very worthy cause. However, the targets of the sponsorship, in my opinion, should be the less fortunate, the at-risk youth in the region. During my forty years of marriage, I've been given a unique opportunity to observe port operations. My husband serves as the executive, served as the executive director of the port in Philadelphia for ten years, and he was subsequently chosen to be the executive director of the Port of Corpus Christi for the next twenty-five years. Community service has been an important part of my entire life. I've been a part of many diverse organizations, but most notably in leadership roles with the Blessed Sacrament Auxiliary, the American Heart Association, the United Corpus Christi Chamber Foundation, including Leadership Corpus Christi, the Pan-American Roundtable, the South Texas Botanical Gardens, the Port Aransas Garden Club, the New Neighbors League, and Mission 911. Throughout those years, I have gained a significant amount of knowledge about the inner workings of boards, as well as specific insight into ports, their stakeholders, and the unique and diverse challenges they encounter. I feel with my strong commitment to community service and dedication to our region, I would be an excellent port commissioner. It will be my responsibility to keep you informed. I believe working toward a more united commission will lead to a more united region, which will benefit all of us in the coastal bend. The watchwords of my tenure will be communication, fiscal responsibility, and environmental stewardship. Thank you for your time and consideration, I welcome any questions you may have.
No questions?
I do, yes.
Sorry, Diane.
Environmental, what do you, I mean, what, what would be that to you as a commissioner?
I'm sorry.
What would environmental stewardship or just in general, what would that be to you?
That's one of the things the port is charged with in its charter, to make sure that we are good environmental stewards. I mean, one of the questions, one of the answers came up about desalinization, and we need to really look at all the options out there for that, not just stick with one idea.
Speak into the microphone a little bit better, sorry, some people can't hear you. I'm just getting a notification.
That's part of the environmental stewardship, it's also just taking care of our community. That really is a big, the port is not just industry and the things that are there now, but we are charged with taking care of the waterways for fishing and boating. That is something that this port should be paying attention to as well. So that's part of what I mean by environmental stewardship.
I do have a question for you.
Sure, yes.
Do you approve the port buying land around the areas? Taking land off the text rule?
Well, I, I think there have been times when we've needed to purchase land, I'm not sure, I think I'd have to see which specific areas you're talking about. Obviously, there's all kinds of rumors around, I've, I've read the agendas, there's some story about eminent domain, I'm a little concerned about that. You can't make promises to people and then not keep those promises. But yes, I, I know there's, there's some need for land, but I, I don't see that we should just buy up all this land and not have a plan for it. Because if we're going to use that land for industry, as an example, I think industry should pay for that, if they want that land.
Very good.
Does that answer?
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Frank McNiff.
Thank you for this opportunity to address y'all, and I want to thank you for the process. This is an organized process, and it's refreshing to experience that, it really is, so thank you. And thank you for all the applicants, we've got quality people here today, and you've read their resumes, and they're quality, and their comments are quality. And I don't necessarily disagree with most of their comments. You see their resumes, you know that I bring forty years of maritime experience, four years at the Coast Guard Academy, twenty years as an officer of the Coast Guard, five active, fifteen reserve. You know that I have thirty years as an attorney specializing in maritime issues. So why me? And to discuss why me, I think you need to look at the composition of the current board and what you want and what you expect. I think, like Scott said, I think we need diversity on the board. I think you need different interests on the board. The board currently consists of two bankers, two business consultants, one oil and gas, one attorney, and one doctor. Now, that doctor knows his stuff, he does, very knowledgeable person, he's got a lot of maritime experience. But this isn't a job you want to start off and learn as you go. You need that maritime experience. Charlie Zahn is termed out, you will not have an attorney on the board. You need an attorney on the board as part of diversification. I'm experienced, I have the knowledge, I'm an expert, expert maritime attorney. That's why I want this role, I think I work well with people, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. McNiff? We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Martin Parrish.
Thank you, Judge, thank you commissioners for giving me this opportunity, I appreciate it. I think the first question is why, right? Why do you want this job? Well, I had a thirty-eight-year career in the energy industry, working for companies that use the Port of Corpus Christi. I was at Arco Oil and Gas at the shore base, I was at Sitco in Valero on the Ship Channel. And at this point in my career, I'm retired now, I just simply want to give back to the community and the port. I'm also a resident of Port Aransas, I look out my window and watch the ships come and go every day, I've always been interested in it, it's, you know, it's just something I like. So it's kind of in my wheelhouse, and I, I like this type of work. For my career, I had a thirty-eight-year career, I was a corporate officer at Valero, an S&amp;P 500 company for the last eleven years of my career. I'm well-rounded with environmental, social, and governance acumen, financial acumen, and demonstrated results. A little more on my career, I had eight years in oil and gas production, twenty-one years in refining, nine years in renewable fuels, and I have a chemical engineering degree from Purdue University. So we all know the port is the energy port of the United States. And to just put that in numbers, ninety-four percent of the port's tonnage year-to-date is hydrocarbons. So that's good, you know, and, and we're, you know, that's where we're at, right? But the port also needs to understand renewable fuels for the future and other diversification. As far as renewable fuels, I ran two of, of three of Valero's business segments, both in renewable fuels. So I was chairman and president of the world's second-largest renewable diesel producer, where we used animal fats, used cooking oil, and an edible corn oil to produce renewable diesel. And production is now, is currently 1.2 billion gallons per year, and that fuel has an eighty percent greenhouse gas emissions reduction versus conventional diesel fuel. I also ran Valero's ethanol business segment, the world's second-largest corn ethanol producer, 1.6 billion gallons of ethanol, and that fuel has a thirty percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions versus conventional gasoline. The combined assets of those two business segments when I retired was six billion dollars. My other areas of experience, I've got experience, you know, across the United States at refineries, so I worked with multiple ports in California, Texas, and Louisiana. I've got desalination experience, carbon capture and sequestration experience, wind energy, and I have extensive knowledge of global low-carbon fuel markets and regulations. In summary, I believe I checked the boxes to be of value to the port. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Parrish? I think we're good, thank you. Mike Pedrati.
Thank you, Judge Scott, and all the commissioners for the opportunity to be considered for appointment to the Port of Corpus. When I first started thinking about being on the Port of Corpus as a commissioner, I went back and did some research to find out, you know, what is the charge? And I found something in the website, and it says, "The port authority is governed by the port commission, and the port commissioner's efforts are to be directed towards industrial expansion, attracting new cargo, building and maintaining public terminals, setting operational policy and cooperating with federal government, as a local sponsor, maintaining and further improving our vital navigational channels." Then I thought, well, what does it mean to me? And as a port commissioner, I, I view the port commission as a board of directors of sorts, which is important, because I've learned that the most successful boards that I've been a member of are ones that respect the independent views of each and every board member, so that their ideas are brought forth for discussion. I've pursued my career in upstream oil and gas for the last thirty-eight years with the belief that industry, community, and the environment can and must work together in order to be successful. I've always endeavored to work with the understanding that responsible business management practices must include recognition of the environment in which it operates, and be responsible for the management of those resources. My goal as a port commissioner is to see that the Port of Corpus continues to be a leader and grow in the many industries that it serves, while at the same time being a responsible leader in our community, as well as a leader in the advocacy for the surrounding bays, estuaries, wetlands, rivers, barrier islands, our marine environment. We must be responsible to our surrounding communities, Corpus Christi, Robstown, Port Aransas, Rockport, Aransas Pass, Ingleside, Ingleside by the Bay, Portland, and Gregory. To that end, I will move to create an environmental science-based think tank utilizing key researchers, key university researchers. For example, I would talk with the Heart Research Institute, UT Marine Science, and the Blucher Institute, to advise us to the potential environmental impact of the various projects that the Port of Corpus is and will be pursuing. I have lived these tenets of conservation and sustainable business practices my entire life, in the most ethical way, while at the same time operating successful energy exploration businesses. I have, over the years, participated at many levels in several conservation organizations, CCA Texas, SEA, Coastal Bend Bays and Estuaries, and I was a board member of the Tex Parks and Wildlife Foundation, to name a few. I believe this demonstrates my commitment to conservation while understanding that business, industry, and the environment must work together in order to achieve the best outcome for all. I was born and raised here in Corpus Christi. After graduating from college, I chose to come back to Corpus, start my career, get married, start a family. My desire to be in the coastal bend, as well as the experience I've gained from business over the last thirty-eight years, has prepared me to address the challenges facing the future of our port. If appointed, I will provide an effective, knowledgeable voice for science-based management to promote industrial growth, coincident with sustainable utilization of our marine environment and our community.
That wraps up your time, thank you.
That's it.
You're sorry. Sorry.
I'm not much of a public speaker, I apologize.
I'm not either, believe it or not. Any questions from anyone, commissioners?
What does it mean, or how do you be inclusive of all commissioners? Even those that have a minority opinion, maybe only one commissioner? I mean, is there policies that need to be changed, or how do you be more inclusive?
So the, the boards I've been on, we always had a policy where if a board member had an idea, it was able, it, it could be brought forth, didn't... Didn't, board members need, you have board members so that you can mine their knowledge. You don't want to shut it down. And so, that's, I don't know what the policies of the port commission are today. But I know that if I'm on there, I'm going to move towards letting people have their time, let them speak, because that's the only way we can gain knowledge, is to listen.
Any other? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
John Balls.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon, everybody. Such a distinguished list of candidates. And I'm proud to be among one of those folks. And it's a little surreal. I'm always before y'all in one capacity or another, wearing one hat or another, whether it's economic development or hospital district. And I could not have imagined that 13, 14 years ago, when I worked at the port, that I would be in a position to actually be considered for a commission appointment. I served under Mr. John LaRue. He was our port director. And I had the privilege of serving under Commissioners Gonzalez and Commissioners Berry. And when Commissioner Berry says that the port was pretty frugal, I know because they were pretty cheap back then with the staff budgets. So, but you guys know me. I've been very active in the community. Born and raised in Corpus. Graduated from Sam Houston State University and came back here to go to graduate school at A and M, Corpus Christi. I've served on multiple boards. I've served on many public agency boards. I've served on the Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority Board. Judge, I served with you for a few years on that board. I rose to the level of chairman. And we did great things over there at the Transit Authority until, you know, we lost you to the legislature. But you did great things at the legislature for us and carried some of our legislation, actually. And I served on the Oasis County Appraisal District Board. And I served as chairman for a few years. And now, currently, I serve as chairman of the Oasis County Hospital District. And it's not so much, everybody here's got really incredible resumes. They're all very accomplished people from business and industry and so forth. It's not just having, you know, everybody's got a unique skill set. But it's also, what's important also, I believe, is governance and knowing how to govern. Like I said, I've served on many public boards. I know how to manage public funds. I've put together many, many public budgets. We just presented the hospital district budget to you earlier this year. So, I'm very familiar with how governance works. I'm very familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. I've attended the Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act training, like all folks do in public-appointed boards and elected officials. So, it's also the component of knowing how to govern. And having worked at the port for many years, in my first capacity was a marketing manager at the port. I had to know everything about the port. I was a spokesperson for the port. And we marketed the port. So, I had to know every component of the port in preparing our collateral material when we went to trade shows and so forth. I transitioned to a business development role where I managed all the general cargo. So, that gave me more of an operational background. So, I'm very familiar with all of the components of the port, whether it's Bulk Dock 1 and 2, you know, Cargo Dock 9. At that time, we diversified and, under Mr. LaRue's leadership, we started developing the La Quinta Trade Gateway as a container terminal. We tried to develop that. And then, we ventured into the coal storage facility. So, I'm pretty familiar with governance. I'm pretty familiar with maritime. And, you know, I'm happy to serve the port in any capacity that I can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Balls? We all know him pretty well.
Yeah. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioner.
Mr. Weber, John Weber.
Good afternoon, Judge and county commissioners. Thank you for accepting my application and giving me this opportunity to interview for this important appointment. Yes, I'm getting close to 60 years old and I am retired, which will allow me to spend the time needed to fulfill the responsibilities of this position. I've managed the operations of a $10 million-plus company in my working years. I learned much regarding keeping and retaining talented employees. I understand how important it is to have happy customers. I managed the business through the Great Recession of 2009, 2007 to 2009, and insisted I take a salary reduction before others. Through smart cost-cutting and making operations more efficient, the company had no layoffs and came back stronger after the recession had ended. I've spent almost 40 years reviewing financial statements of billion-dollar companies, analyzing the numbers to find financial strengths and weaknesses. I have been through the stagflation of the late '70s, when the Fed raised interest rates to nearly 20%. I understand and have lived through many economic cycles. This experience, in addition to college studies in economics, finance, business statistics, and accounting, give me the skills to help ensure the prosperity of the port. The last commissioner you all appointed has made great progress reducing expenses and expanding transparency at the port. You all made an excellent appointment and you deserve credit. In addition to the work the commissioner has been doing, I plan on assisting and in continuing to push for more transparency and reducing needless expenses. These actions will lay the foundation for the port to regain the public's trust. I won't engage in secret MOUs and I won't accept a port credit card. I will focus on three major core parts of the business that are lacking. Number one is the focus on the ship channel improvement project. Without a working ship channel, the port can't continue to meet the needs of the customers. Number two is to focus on the infrastructure. The dock maintenance needs much attention and the docks need to be improved in the future. Also, the needs of ag customers need to be considered. Number three is the budget of this taxpayer-owned entity. I will go through the financial statements and point out wasteful spending and make sure proper audits are performed. This will assist in transparency and show the port is a good steward of money. Besides those three core objectives, I will push for the rank-and-file port employees to get raises to keep up with inflation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Weber? I don't think so. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. I will also make note that we had a late application. It was very late. It was from Lamont Taylor. But we want to thank him for at least applying. We appreciate the application. But it was after the deadline, so we couldn't move forward. I believe that, in just a minute, Commissioner Chesney wants to make a statement. But before we even begin this narrowing down on, down to five candidates, I just want to say again, we, this is a really tough job because we have some really, really amazing people that have applied. This is a difficult decision for all of us. I would remind you all that this is a court. So, if you don't like the outcome, let's please keep quiet, step outside, go on about your way, whatever. This is still a court and we still have business to do after this vote. So, we appreciate you keeping order. And we have two gentlemen in the back that will escort you out if we have any problems. So, just to be clear. But I believe Commissioner Chesney wanted to make some announcement.
Judge, a brief statement just in regards to an issue that's been brought up. Counsel has advised me there is an illegal conflict of interest in my decision to nominate or vote for any port commissioner. However, out of an abundance of caution, I have asked that my company be removed from the list on vendors used by the Port of Corpus Christi until I get that official written opinion on the issue. So, I just wanted to address that. Thank you very much, Judge.
Thank you. He has. To keep not a conflict, he's going to take his company off of the list of vendors for the port. Yes, until they clarify to make sure that what he is being told is correct. So, it clears him. Yes.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, will there be any commentary? Or do you just want names nominated? Or how do we go about that?
I think we just stick to names. We've gotten this far. We've all had individual meetings. I believe everyone here knows the credibility of all on our list. We have some incredible candidates that have stepped up to the plate. So, in order to keep order, I suggest we just keep it simple.
I'd like to be able to share a few comments. I don't know if everyone would. I mean, I'll keep it under a minute or so. Connie, if you want to keep time and let us know.
Okay. After each one?
Oh, no, no. Just a general statement before we start voting?
Oh, you can have that right now. No, no, no. I just gave him the opportunity. You're more than welcome. Yes.
I don't know if Commissioner Nance wants to go first and we can just go.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to echo what you said, Judge. I mean, the amount of applicants, we as a county sometimes struggle with the amount of applicants that we receive. And sometimes, we have to repost vacancies. And lately, over the last year or so, we have had a strong group of applicants. Even when we struggled with animal services now, we have an overabundance of qualified applicants and have actually increased the size of that group as an advisory group. I wish that we could do the same here. It's been echoed many times. And I totally agree that it's been a very rich pool of names and people who are well-known in this community. And to put yourself out like that, we kind of get it when we have to put our names out there up for vote. And so, you only get a pool of five to be able to vote today. But I want to just personally thank each of you. We all had a chance to meet individually and spent a good amount of time getting to know you and asking you questions, aside from just your few minutes of presentation here today or maybe some of the follow-up questions that we had. But some of those key points are important for me. I've mentioned to each and every one of you that you're not going to hear from me on direct issues. That's just not how I appoint. I appoint in trusting you and your, and who you are, your character and your background to provide good feedback to the constituents that you represent. So, trust that you will never get a call from me to say, "This is how you should vote for a CEO evaluation" or for any expansions. All I expect is just a kind update every now and then, which we get from both of our current commissioners and, of course, from our outgoing chair. I do want to say, though, that this is going to be tough because there are so many people who have applied and show that they deserve to be in this position. So, I want to thank you for giving yourselves and your time to us. And I want to thank Commissioner Gully for your time and your service. You've done excellent work. And I wish you all the best. Thank you.
You want to speak, Commissioner?
Yes, Judge. All I want to say is thank you all for taking the time to apply. And this is how everything's going to get done here in our, in our community with our citizens getting involved in our community, okay? And I want to thank you all again. Without people like yourself here, things wouldn't get done. And I can see now here in this courtroom, we have the best of the best in Oasis County. So, thank you all for applying.
Commissioner Gonzalez, would you like to say anything?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for taking interest in being a port commissioner. And, you know, with all the applicants that we have here, the qualifications are all outstanding. You might as well call the city and tell them not to worry appointing somebody. We'll appoint it for them. The guys are here, you know? So, maybe it'd be even better for the city, right? So, I just want to say thank you for taking the time out to apply and for going, at least visiting with us. Because that's what we look for when people come by our offices and visit. And those that don't come by our office probably don't want to visit. But anyway, I just want to say thank you and good luck.
Mr. Chesney?
I didn't know we were making those kind of statements. So, I'm going to jump back into.
I was coming back to you.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I echo what everybody says. And I will tell you that I've been making port appointments a long time and they nauseate me. It is the hardest. It is, it is the hardest thing to do. The pressure is intense because the people are so good and everybody's calling you and everybody's wanting. Because we have such a high quality of applications. But it is truly the hardest and the worst part of, I will say, one of the worst, if not the worst, part of this job. Because today, we're going to make two people happy and 10 people unhappy and all the people that are related to those 10. And that stinks and it's terrible because we have such a high quality of applications. So, thank you very much for applying. And again, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, but just to agree with all the commissioners and what they've said so far. And it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's get this party started. Commissioner Hernandez, you have one name from the list.
Yes, ma'am. I nominate Mr. Kenneth Berry. Kenneth Berry?
Yes, please speak into the microphone. Commissioner Madas.
Lamontia.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Jaime Garcia.
Commissioner Chesney.
Mike Pedrati.
And myself, Martin Parrish. I think the rest of you. I did Martin Parrish. Did you get all the names?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good. Now, Commissioner Hernandez, you have two votes. You have to vote for two people of the five.
Our next vote will go with Jaime Garcia.
You have two.
You can only vote once?
No, you vote, yeah. For the, you can only vote for the same person once. But you have one other vote.
John Balls.
Wait.
No, it has to be one of the five on the list.
You have to vote for your person too, Commissioner.
You don't have to.
Well, you don't have to.
You don't have to vote for your person.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. My bad.
No, it has to be one of the names that are on the board back here. You may see with Peyton better. Yes.
I'll go with Mr. Lamontia. No, who's Garcia? Is it Jaime?
You already have one vote for Jaime Garcia. Yes. Your second vote is for?
Mr. Lamontia.
Mr. Lamontia. Now, Commissioner Madas, your two votes.
Lamontia. And? And Pedrati.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Garcia and Lamontia.
Commissioner Chesney? And congratulations, Mr. Lamontia. You already have three votes.
Pedrati and Parrish.
And I am going with?
I apologize. Pedrati and Lamontia. I apologize. My bad. Wait.
Lamontia already is.
Oh, he has three?
Yes.
Okay, Pedrati and Parrish. My, I'm sorry. You're right.
Sorry. I just congratulated him. Yes. And? Great. Mr. Martin Parrish and Pedrati. So, Mr. Pedrati and Mr. Lamontia, congratulations. And if you all want to visit, please take it outside because we have some more court that we need to do. Mike, everyone, we still have some work to do. So, please take it outside. Okay, going back to our regular agenda 3A8. That is? Oh, sorry. That's on the front. No, I'll do 4B. Sorry. On executive. Let me do that first. I'm out of order. Executive B.
Excuse me. Commissioners, Judge, would you like to have a motion to accept the results or anything like that to validate the choices?
I lost one some years. Who was the other one at three?
Pedrati and Lamontia. Okay. We already voted.
Yeah, I mean, it's a vote.
Do we need to do a motion for that too?
We don't ever do anything like that ever.
Yeah, we don't ever do a?
I mean, I'll make a motion that we accept the results.
Accept the results of the election.
Is that okay?
And the results as the two people you, as posted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Lamontia and Pedrati.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, going to executive 4B, and this. We, I need a motion. Commissioner Hernandez, do you want to do that first one, 4B?
Yes, I'll go ahead and do it, Judge.
Yes.
Motion to approve and execute settlement of agreement in federal cost number 219, CV 40-43, Diana Bond versus Nuasis County, and authorize, authorized county judge to sign and issue an early release check for the final settlement amount and separate, separate early release check in, for final payment of add item fee, court costs and fees, and direct auditor to issue the check.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
And I'm told that as long as on the check request form, the amount is filled out, that that is sufficient for the auditor.
Okay, so you all don't need to state the amount on record?
That's what you all do on record, but.
We had hoped with, I mean, I guess.
All I need is something from the county attorney saying this was the settlement was the amount for payment for this. That's all we would need for our payment, our relation form.
You're good?
As long as it'll get, as long as it'll satisfy the auditor's request, I'm good.
Right, okay, and?
Okay. On 4A, just because you're still here, I just noticed that, and I'm very sorry. We were going to have a motion to bring this back in January. We needed some more information for this, for the January 17th. So I'll make the motion to move this and bring it back to January 17th meeting.
Second.
Table it to the 17th to bring it back on, yes.
It didn't get on here.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I should have done that earlier on you. I just happened to look up. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And 4C, you want to do that one for me?
Yes, Judge. A motion to execute engagement letter and retain Brian Miller as outside counsel on behalf of defendants in federal cause number 223, CV 319, Christie Britt versus Nuasis County et al.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. On 3A8, that's back in our regular agenda.
That's mine, Judge.
Yeah.
The motion, excuse me, motion to reject and repudiate the Padre Balle deed restriction signed by the previous county judge on October 15th, 2020, and motion to approve the resolution and/or order stating the same.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. 3A9.
Judge, the motion to direct the county attorney to draft an instrument to correct the chain of title and file set instrument, if necessary, related to the filed Padre Balle, Balle deed restriction signed by the previous county judge.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. On, going, I guess there's nothing else in here. For D, and the executive.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to retain John Martinez as outside legal counsel regarding the Padre Balle cease and desist letter and took over payment of legal fees from Nuasis County Board of Park Commissioners. And motion, and to direct county attorney and outside counsel to proceed as discussed.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. For E, does, let me see. I'll do that one, okay? I make the motion to approve and execute settlement agreement regarding Hagerty Consulting's demand letter and authorize the county judge to sign and issue an early release check for the final payment amount and direct the auditor to issue the check ASAP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Judge, just for, just real quick for discussion, this was, just to be clear, this was money that the county attorney deemed was due and payable and undisputed.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Then we need to go to, what happened to my? 3D1. Discuss and consider authorizing and approving a method of procurement, RFP, request for proposals for public health services, and authorize a purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee. I'll second that motion. Do we need to give any more details about that on the selection committee for you, Michael, on this one?
I think with the direction I received earlier this morning.
Earlier, that's clear.
I would like to change the word "and" in between the Nuasis County Public Health Unit Director, and then have "or" Nuasis County Public Unit Health Program Coordinator. That way, it's either or, not two people from the same department.
And I think we also got somebody from the hospital district, Michael.
Yes, the hospital district is a member as well. So it's the Hospital District Board Member, Nuasis County Public Health Unit Director, or Nuasis County Public Health Unit Program Coordinator.
So his motion was to authorize a method of procurement with that selection committee and adopt an order.
I'll second. If there wasn't one, I don't know if there was one.
Hey, yeah.
There was, okay.
It's okay.
Sorry.
If you want a second. Is there any other discussion on this one? I know we took this back there before. We had some other things, or are we ready to vote? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. D2, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a method of procurement, competitive sealed bills, sealed bids for the lease of office space at the Calderon Building for primary care services, and authorize a purchasing agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee as well. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any other discussion for this? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Let me check one more time to make sure I haven't left anything out. Oh, we need to go back to the court dates, the last part of A3.
Judge, I've got one.
Okay, I need 14. I need a motion on 3A14 to accept the proposed 2024 Commissioner's Court schedule. We have, I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say.
Wait, wait, wait. That's why I had a, I had a conflict.
Oh, you had a question on this. Yes, yes.
I had one conflict on there for July 10th, and I was just wanting to look to see if there was a way. I'm sorry, I don't, 14. Just see if there's a way to move that, please.
July?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the calendar. I'm sorry. I thought we forgot we did that one. Hold on one second.
On July, you have the 3rd, the 17th and the 31st.
So would it be okay at this point in advance to do it on the 17th instead of the 10th? That would be my request to the court.
And that's right behind the NACO conference if anybody's going.
Oh.
It's not during, it's after?
It's after.
Uh huh.
But y'all, y'all will be gone the day we post on the 12th.
For the NACO con?
If you move it to the 17th, we post the Friday before, so we will be posting on July 12th.
I don't. No, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Yes, Teresa.
Would that be okay with everybody?
I don't have a problem with it. Does, do you have a problem with 17th? My calendar's not loading, but my staff isn't blowing up my phone like I can.
If no one has an objection, I would like to make the July 10th be amended to July 17th, please. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to amend just the July 10th meeting to the July 17th date.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Purchasing D1, are we doing it, do we do it now, or are we going to do it?
We did D1 already, and D2. I had a comment for D2, though.
Okay. Well, and then your motion to accept the calendar now with the change. Yes, so.
Yeah, with, just a motion with the change?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Accept the amendment to the calendar. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now we'll go back to your question.
So on 4D2, I need to make that same change in the language on the committee structure. It's the Hospital District Board Member, Director of Mental Health Programs, and instead of "and," it'll be "or," Deputy Director of Mental Health Programs.
No, it's not Director of Mental Health, or it's Director, Director for the Public Health.
Public Health Unit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we don't have that yet.
No, but it's a public health unit right now, but not unit, but.
Okay, so it'll be Hospital District Board Member, Director of Public Health Unit, or Deputy Director of Public Health.
Just say Dr. Gonzalez or his designee in the department.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know what his title is.
We'll get the titles correct.
Okay, would everybody glance through their agendas and make sure I haven't left anything?
Did you want to table 10, or just take no action?
Yes, we were going to table 10.
For January, pending?
Push it to the January 17th.
Yeah, it'll be pending.
January 17th meeting, because that gives 17th the next week. We have the 10th and the 17th, but that will give us time, is what we talked about.
Number 10.
3A10.
3A10, okay.
Make the motion to move that, and we have a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And I think that covers everything. Do we have any adjournments in memory?
Yes.
Yes.
One?
Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Darlene Ursula Madrono. A beloved mother, sister and grandmother passed away peacefully in her hometown, Corpus Christi, Texas, on November 24th, 2023. Born on July 15th, 1967, in Corpus Christi, Darlene was a cherished member of the community and will be deeply missed by all her newer. She was a woman of strength, resilience and unwavering love. She was a beacon of light in the lives of her family and friends, always ready with a kind word or a comforting hug. Her infectious laughter and warm spirit will be remembered fondly by all who had the privilege of knowing her. She is preceded in her death by her father, Celso Madrono, and her brother, Joey Madrono. Their memories live on in Darlene's heart and in the stories she shared with her loved ones. Her legacy continues through her surviving family members who will forever cherish her memory. Darlene is survived by her life partner, Roland Garza. Her daughters, Bianca Garcia and Lynette Gomez. Her sons, Aiden Gomez and Percy Garcia. Jessica, her mother, Blanca Garcia. Her siblings. Her love for her family was immeasurable, and she was a constant source of support and encouragement for all. Certainly condolences go out to the Madrono family and to Roland Garza and his family and the loss of this lovely lady. Thank you.
Yes, our hearts go out to anyone.
And Judge, of course, we want to think of Mayor Paul Iguahardo and the loss of her father. I don't have any information on it, but.
I have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot, yeah, that's.
Just one second. I was looking it up, but I thought you were fixing to read it, so I didn't pull it up. Yes. On our hearts and thoughts and prayers, and our hearts are broken for the mayor and her family and dealing with the loss at this time of year, too, and her father passed away. Juan Manuel Rodriguez, born on January 3rd, 1937, in Robstown, Texas, gracefully departed from this world on December 9th, 2023, peacefully at his home in Corpus Christi, Texas. At 86 years old, Juan leaves behind a legacy of love and dedication. Having devoted 25 years to the Corpus Christi Army Depot as a helicopter aircraft mechanic, Juan's commitment and expertise were exemplary. His craftsmanship and passion extended beyond his profession to his cherished hobby of assembling and flying model airplanes. With meticulous care, he spent hours in his garage creating these intricate marvels, showing, showcasing his hidden engineering talents. Juan's devotion extended to his family, surviving him with fond memories. His beloved wife of 57 years, Magdalena Rodriguez, and his children, Johnny Rodriguez, Betty Rodriguez, Amy Melish and Rick Melish, Palette Iguahardo, Victor Iguahardo, and Jessica Rodriguez were dear to his heart as were his two nieces and nephew, Janie Esquivel, Mary Gangora and Al Gangora. He found immense joy in his grandchildren, Elena Nicole Rodriguez and Jude Victor Iguahardo, embracing every moment spent with them. In his journey to reunite with the Lord, Juan joins his mother, Paula Quinones, and brother Alfonso Gangora, leaving behind a lasting impact on those who had the privilege of knowing him. Juan's ability to fix anything and his passion for his country as a United States Army member defined his remarkable life. While we mourn his loss, Juan's memory will forever be cherished in the hearts of his family, friends and all who were touched by his warm skill and love. He was truly a wonderful man. A celebration of Juan Manuel Rodriguez's life will be honored through two solemn ceremonies. A holy rosary, rosary will be recited at Memory Gardens located at 8200 Old Brownsville Road, Corpus Christi. On December 14th at 7:00 PM in the evening, family will receive friends from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Funeral Home Chapel. Following this, a continued visitation will be held at St. John the Baptist Catholic Church situated at 7522 Everhart Road in Corpus Christi. On December 15th at 12:00 PM, with a funeral mass and remembrance of Juan to begin at 1:00 PM. This solemn occasion will provide an opportunity to honor Juan's life, his devotion, and the impact he made on all who were privileged to know him. All who wish to pay their respects are welcome to join in commemorating the life of this remarkable individual. He will be laid to rest at Memory Gardens Cemetery. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family. Is there anyone else? Thank you all. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
All in favor, aye, it's unanimous. It is 3:12 PM.